Good afternoon. I want to call the February 26, 2020, meeting of the Planning Commission to Order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Donenfeld.
Present.
Commissioner Irvin Jr.
Present.
Commissioner Hirschwein.
Present.
Commissioner Lewin Isakues, Commissioner Song.
Present.
Vice Chair Maruzzi.
Here.
And Chair Womack.
Present.
Six members present. We have a quorum.
Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, February 20th. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
The next item is the acceptance of the agenda. Mr. Director?
Madam Chair, staff is going to request that item number 2C, which is an extension of time for New Church II or the Orchidry Project, be continued to the March 11th Planning Commission meeting. I understand that there may be members of the public who wish to speak on this item, and if so, Madam Chair, I believe that it would be appropriate to have them speak under public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on Consent Calendar and other agenda items and items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking action on items that are not on the posted agenda. Three minutes is allowed for each speaker. Testimony for public hearing at this time may be offered. Members who would like to discuss items 1A, 1B, 1C, 4A, and 5A are directed to comment under this section. If you wish to comment on the public hearing items, you may comment at this time. Those are 2A and 2B and 2C, or you may wait until the public hearing on those items.
Chair, I have a question. Are we going to be asked to approve the consent calendar items, or do we have a chance to pull?
We're going to...
We will take public comments first and then consider...
First, and then go to consent calendar.
Okay, thank you.
Consent calendar.
So the public hearing is open if you wish to come forward?
I'm not here personally, just Robert Bruggeman, but I'm also here on behalf of my employer, Lars Viklund, my colleagues and guests, to comment on item 4A, the Village Pub's request for modification of its land use permit to allow for extended hours and outside amplified music. For almost 20 years, Mr. Viklund has invested millions of dollars in boutique hotels in the heart of downtown Palm Springs without any public subsidy. Besides the landmarked historic Del Marcos Hotel, we operate the 350 Hotel and luxurious Los Reyna Villas and Azuca Restaurant. At all three of our properties over the years, I have worked for the company. I have personally received numerous complaints regarding the amplified music at the Village Pub. We have called both management at the establishment as well as the non-emergency hotline with the city, both with very limited success. Managers have frequently blamed promoters who rent the facility or said they will turn down the music, but frequently this has not been the case. Calls to the hotline have a limited impact as well, since PSPD is occupied with higher priority calls. We've also had to deal with the disorderly conduct and noise of drunken patrons who parked on Baristo or in the historic Robinson's building parking lot when the pub closes at its current time. The proposed extension, we believe, would exacerbate both of these problems. We recognize that one of the benefits of our downtown location is the vibrant restaurants and nightlife on Palm Canyon. However, those benefits are accrued when all of us work cooperatively to achieve a mutually satisfactory conclusion. Based on our previous and ongoing experience with this neighboring venue, we vehemently oppose any extension of hours or any additional amplified music. I'd also like to add personal comments about the item that was moved forward regarding the Orchid Inn. The request by New Church LLC for the time extension on the renovation and adaptive reuse of the Orchid Inn and Community Church. If Mr. Weintraub was present, I don't believe he is, but if he was, I would say to him, "Mr. Weintraub, you and I do not know each other, but we work together every day, as every day I have to explain to countless guests and visitors why the city permits your neglected, blighted property to exist in the heart of the historic Tennis Club District." The question arises so frequently that my colleagues have a laminated copy of the Desert Sun article published in 2017 to show guests what was approved without opposition over three years ago. Many of the return guests laugh at any suggestion that progress is being made or that anyone at the city will hold the applicant in any way accountable. When they Google your company, they chuckle that your website heralds construction of the project will begin in 2017. Perhaps it's up time to update your website. That said, the callous indifference to the effect such an eyesore has on the overall experience to visitors to Palm Springs, if I may continue, I have... ............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. Dear Planning Committee members, my name is Christina Van Dyk, and my home is located in the historic Tennis Club neighborhood, and I'm here to address item 4A regarding the Village Pub's request for amplification and extended hours till 4:00 a.m. Like many of my neighbors, I have had issues with the Village Pub not complying with the existing rules. The rules that are in the land use permit that prohibit the business from having amplified music inside while the windows and the doors are open, and also rules regarding decibel limits at certain times. Well, just last night, I drove over to, in my pajamas, to the Village Pub, and there were, in fact, doors and windows open and music blaring after 1:00 p.m. So I have a video of that. The Village Pub is requesting to allow or resume live music during the day on the patio between noon and 9:00 p.m. I would not have a problem with that if they would honor the 9:00 p.m. cutoff. It is at night up until 2:00 p.m. that noise is an issue. And interesting, in their two-page letter dated December 10th of 2019, they only refer to the daytime issue as far as music and noise, and they don't discuss the evening up until 2:00 p.m. They're also requesting to remain open until 4:00 a.m. Well, already, there are enough problems with excessive noise, public drunkenness, fights, and vandalism with a pub being open until 2:00 p.m. Since its closing, it appears that the Zelda's crowd has gravitated to the Village Pub. The proposed upstairs dance floor next to Village Pub and Moxie, oh, the proposed upstairs dance floor of the Village Pub is located to Moxie, which also has been a problem as far as excessive noise. Along with the proposed cannabis business on the other side of the Village Pub, it's just a recipe for disaster. And thank you for your consideration.
My name is Mike Ware. I live in the Tennis Club neighborhood on Arenas. I'm going to speak first about the Orchidry briefly, and then I'm going to speak about the Village Pub. The Orchidry is going to be a great project when it gets built. The new application, which would include the whole block, deserves to be built, and it deserves to have the TOT entitlement from the first application entitlement transferred over. I don't know exactly what's going on in the negotiations, but my gut tells me that that may be the sticking point and the reason maybe for the continuation. But I think it's a deserving project. It's going to be beautiful. Some of you, I don't think, were here for the first iteration with 2014. The first application was for a five-story hotel with 109 rooms, and the applicant has lowered it to two stories. I think it's 59 rooms now. It's going to be gorgeous. I ask you to do what you can to get it done. I talked to a lot of neighbors in the neighborhood that say very similar things to the manager from the Del Marcos, but it's the only game in town, and when it's done, it's going to be great. So that'll end my comments on the Orchidry. As far as the Village Pub, the music from the Village Pub over the years has been problematic for the neighborhood. At my house, we can hear it. I've talked to numerous residents that hear it. I think the suggestions put forward in the staff report, I'd like to commend the Planning Department for doing such a complete job and taking noise and the disruption to neighborhoods seriously. So I am against any extension to 4:00 a.m. Going back to the Orchidry, it will get built. You're going to have a five-star Arbege Hotel, how many feet? 200 feet away from a bar that's, bar and restaurant that's open to 4:00 a.m.? Those are incompatible. I'm in favor of limiting the hours on weekdays to four hours to 9:00 p.m. and on weekends to 10:00 p.m. Outdoor amplified music should be limited to five to 10. I applaud all the attenuation measures that the Planning Department has put forward. They are consistent with what the city has done before with Infusion Beach, with Colony 29, with Asia LLC. The Village Pub is not being treated anywhere differently than those venues also. And that ends my comments. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chairs, Vice Chair. My name is Patricia Preslin. I'm a resident of the Historic Tennis Club on Arenas and Vice President and Executive Director of the Greater Palm Springs Bar and Restaurant Organization. I am here to support the Village Pub's efforts to extend the hours of operation and include outdoor live entertainment and sound as part of their business operation according to agreed conditions. The Village Pub has been a pioneer in the hospitality industry, bringing music, dancing, and food all together to downtown Palm Springs 25 years ago at a time when downtown needed a strong economic boost. This combination also brings diversity to Palm Springs. Now regarding the extension of hours, we have to remember that this is...
Just one second. Can you put the timer on, please?
Oh, I have a short.
It's okay. We'll get that on, and you'll have a little longer.
Okay. Regarding the extension of hours, we have to remember, this is not only for customers who want to stay after having... who want to stay after having been in the establishment to have food before driving home. Remember that the Village Pub is a restaurant. They're a restaurant all day long into the evening, and they will be a restaurant solely after 2:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m., as we have other establishments that serve late at night as well. But this is also about residents who may work until midnight or later and may want a bite to eat. This is also about hospital workers, police, fire, or residents who would appreciate a late-night venue, or tourists who arrive here on a late flight and have nowhere to go to grab a bite. So I thank you for these considerations, and I think we ought to also consider that the Village Pub has been here for so many years, bringing people to Palm Springs, people who love the music. So with the conditions, I say, let's bring more people to Palm Springs and make them happier.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If you do, please line up now.
Good evening, or afternoon, I guess. I'm a relatively new person to Palm Springs, and I live about two blocks away from the Village Pub. And I just want to make a quick comment. Actually, where I came from is in Seattle, and I live in a neighborhood downtown that has a lot of the nightlife, the activity in the nightlife. And without exception, the after-hours properties, the clubs, I'll call them, they have lots of trouble around. There's all kinds of the fights and the shootings and police activities and the sirens going. It's just a zoo down there. And actually, we're going to move because of that. So I highly enjoy the activities at the pub during the day, the music out on the outside, all the different things. They've done a wonderful job there, I think, and it's a very good establishment. But the 2:00 to 4:00 time factor, if it was purely a restaurant and that's all, that would be one thing, but that's not what they're proposing, from what I understand anyway. And if they're going to have any kind of music with the windows open, it will have a major, major impact on the neighborhood, but also just all that activity will be something that I would hate to see in the neighborhood. And in particular, with the comment that you made about the police change of the shift at 2:30 in the morning, and that activity level that they're kind of absent during that period of time, I think that would be highly problematic. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You'd come up, please.
Thank you, everybody, for giving us a chance to come up and speak. My name is Rob Martinez, and I'm a local musician here in the valley. I've been playing music here for the last 30 years. I've been employed on and off by the Village Pub over the last probably 15 or more years as well. One of the things that we've noticed is how the Village Pub has been a central location for a lot of people that come to town and from all different walks and all different areas, and not just from the United States. These are people that come here from all around the world. I've met people while working there from as far away as Israel to Sweden, and you name it. And what's happened is we've developed a rapport with a lot of those folks that have come into town, and they visit here every year because we are a destination spot here in Palm Springs. They come to town, and they look for us each year to come back, and we see them time and time again. We've met families through and through, where we end up meeting their children and everyone else in the family that's come along with them. And what's happened is through these latest issues with the permits, it's also stripped us of our work. I've lost almost a third of my income by losing the jobs and the times that we normally were able to play. I was one of the musicians playing on the patio. I've played on the inside of the pub till late night as well through the years, and never have we had, we ever had a problem. You know, nothing different than any other nightclub that has a problem with late-night issues, and theirs were far less than any of the other ones that my friends all have worked at or other colleagues have worked at. So one of the things that we've always kind of wondered is, it's such a, downtown is getting smaller, and there's so much building coming around the outside of them, there's a lot of residential areas that are obviously going to get affected when you live that close to basically the metropolitan center of Palm Springs, which is downtown. So, and I can understand, you know, when you're asking about music and things, when you're getting laid into the 2:00 p.m. mark, but they've never had music playing at 2:00 a.m. in the morning. I've been there working myself, and we've always stopped at between 1:00 and 1:30. So there was never any outside music that was blasting at those times of night. We've had people come by even from the city years ago when we were playing outside and checked us with dB meters, with volume meters, and we never once went over any of the marks that they've asked us, what were the limits for the sound and for the decibel levels, not once. So the complaints seem a little tedious to me and a little out of the ordinary, but there's always going to be someone that's upset about something somewhere. But I do believe that it's always been such a wonderful place for people to meet, and the diversity...
Thank you. Thank you.
So much for letting me come up here. My name is David Mariner. We live in North Palm Springs. I am the General Manager of Village Pub, so I do want to address some of the things that have been spoken about. The after 2:00 a.m. to 4:00 a.m. expenditure, we definitely do not want to have any music. I want to make that clear. We're not trying, we are actually trying to, we've brought in PatronScan. We've been leaders in making sure that the RIFRAF of this community do not participate in our venue. PatronScan is a system that we found in Vegas, and we brought it when we saw what was happening at Zelda's. And we definitely do not want, we want to be clear, we do, we are not trying to be a nightclub. We are a restaurant. We just won number-one sports bar. We are, we have that venue where we love live music, but we're a bar at night and a restaurant, and we continue to serve food. We want to create a venue where it's always food and just making sure that everyone is having fun and is safe. With PatronScan, if you've ever been in a fight at Moxie's, at Drink, at Copa, whoever uses it, and in fact, in your further committees, I would suggest maybe making that part of legislation to like make sure that everyone has PatronScan because they all work together. If you've ever been in a fight anywhere, we stop you from ever coming again. It's a lifelong ban. We have noticed, if you speak with the Police Department, that we have actually had less and less fights in the last two years. We don't have fights hardly ever anymore. I can't honestly remember the last fight that we've had. We've seen it at Moxie's, we've seen it at other places. Their fighting go down as well. The ones that are using PatronScan are being very successful. But we do not want to bring that nightclub attitude with us, and we just want to work as a partner with the communities here. And we want them to know that we're not trying to extend the hours to be, you know, to uprise and to keep loud music. We want to extend the hours to actually, there's been ABC studies that we could bring to the forefront that actually prove that it's safer to keep them there, not force them out at one particular time where you're saying, you know what, alcohol's gone, and now you have to get out. But if you say alcohol's done, the music's done, but you can relax and eat, it's actually a safer environment, and it's safer for the community if we can allow this. And so we're, you know, we know it's a trust, but we ask that you would extend our hours for that reason. I would also just want to say with the live music, we have suffered a huge loss in our revenue during the day without the live music, and we really, really need it. We believe that it helps draw people in. We try to support jobs, and our staff has been really hurt by the impact financially of not having live music. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jorge Gonzalez. I am the Executive Chef of Village Pub. I've been affiliated to them professional and personal since 1999. I've been there for the last 10 years. We always have been working together with the city to try to develop diversity, to have, keep bringing tourists to the town. And my responsibility as a chef is to create menus that commit to what we are as a pub and the diversity, and this approval of our flags, they are always a part of our building. In the extension of the time, it was pretty much to offer food for our customers with a special menu. It's accommodated to people that have been having fun through the night, and they, you know, with the city now having a specific place for Lyft and Uber to be a pickup point that is just like 10 or 15 feet from our building, that even is better because our customers don't feel like rushing to go home or anything like that. They can enjoy their meal after they've been having fun. Like David mentioned, it's going to be music at that time, as well with the construction of the new sport arena. Just keep in mind, we are the number-one sports bar for 2020, and that's what we work for. With over 40 TVs, we accommodate every sport, and having that new arena is going to bring so much business to the city, and people will want to have a place to watch their games before or after any event they come for the arena. So we always look into how to accommodate for everything the city has been developing through the years. Like so few people have mentioned, Village Pub has been the pioneer for live music and entertainment since then, one, 24 years ago. And when the other businesses weren't interested in operating Palm Springs, the owners decided to take that journey and offer something else for the city. And we've been there since 25 years, and that's why I would like you guys to consider that in your decision, because the main commitment of the family that owns Village Pub is work together with the city, with all the departments, to provide a better experience for all of visitors and residents of the city of Palm Springs. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Chairpersons, Council Staff, and ladies and gentlemen. My name's Diane Blaisdell. I'm a local attorney, and I represent the applicant before you this afternoon. I would like to call to your attention, as you all know, this is the CBD zone. This is a proper use, proper zone for the location as well as my client's business. As is being stressed before you this afternoon...
Hold one second. Put the timer on, please.
As is being stressed before you this afternoon, this is a restaurant establishment as well as one of the premier locations for live music. I think what has happened is a lot of people tend to lose the fact that my client has been in business for over 20 years, close to 25 years. They had their first noise citation three months ago in 25 years. That is with music on the patio and with amplification to a certain degree on the patio. This particular establishment has been in place so long, certain things have transpired and have been grandfathered in, so to speak. And my client is merely asking for the legitimization, if you will, of what they have been doing and has been performed at their location for the approximate last 20 to 25 years. What happened recently, we think, has what has occurred, and another gentleman has raised it today, is there is this influx of a lot of residential mixed with small hotels, boutique hotels, which I am intimately familiar with and have represented numerous of them along the Bellardo corridor and a little bit further back. However, what the council may not realize is when you have, and my offices were at Arenas and 111 for five years, and I would hear the music from Los Casuelas, and I could hear the music from the Village Pub. But there are some places downtown that do have amplification and which do not have an LUP. So there, such as one that just went out of business, which was Goza Goza. They had a lot of amplification on that back patio. So I would like you to take into consideration two things. One, you have a business before you that has been a spectacular business for 25 years with one noise citation for that timeframe. Two, they are merely asking for a LUP to be put into place for that which they have been performing for the last 25 years. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? The public hearing is closed. We're moving on to the consent calendar. We have three items on the consent calendar. 1A is the approval of the minutes of January 22nd, 2020. 1B is the annual review of the Virgin Hotel Development Agreement. And 1C is the Sanquist LLC request for a parcel map waiver to subdivide 4.96 acres into two parcels for the undeveloped property corner, the northwest corner of North Sunrise Way and East Hockowitz Way. Is there anyone who wishes to pull any of these items from the consent calendar? Commissioner Hirschman?
I just have a question of staff on one of them, and it might not need to pull. Can I...
Please.
So on the Sanquist request, what's the status of the building? I think we had some problems with it, and then that's all I know about it.
Yes, so the project is going through plan check right now. Staff has been working with the architect on that project to make some revisions, and we've given them the preliminary approval for those changes. So those will be incorporated into the building permit set.
So they came back to us a second time, right? Is that...
Yeah.
Okay. And then, as far as the Virgin Hotel, I would kind of like to hear a report from the developer on it. Is that...
So it's fine. You want to pull that one separately.
Yeah.
On Sanquist LLC, that was appealed to the City Council, and Planning Commission action on that was overturned. And then, and then they've gone through architecture, and they're in plan check.
Okay, thank you.
So that's the history on that project.
Madam Chair, I also have a question that could be very quickly for staff.
Please.
Also, on Sanquist project, this tenant, tenant trap map, I mean, tenant parcel map, does not, all the agreements still of having the developer develop the entire site, grading, street improvement, landscape improvement, building improvement, it's all constructed at one time, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So they'll be, as a part of the construction of the Medical Office Building, they will be doing all of the street improvements on all three frontages.
So can we call the question on items 1A and 1C? There are no other questions, I'm sorry.
I move the approval of the consent calendar to include items 1A and 1C excluding 1B.
And I'll second that.
This passes unanimously. Okay. Item 1B, the annual review of the Virgin Hotel Development Agreement, case number 5.1427DA. Staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, as you'll recall, back on January 23rd of last year, the City Council approved amendments to the Virgin Hotel Development Agreement for the construction of the Virgin Hotel at the northeast corner of Bellardo Road and Museum Way. That architectural approval had been granted in the year prior, and the development agreement becomes the contract between the city and the developer for the developer to carry out that project. As a part of that development agreement amendment, there was a performance schedule that was found in Section 4.1 of the development agreement, and the one item that was to be completed within the past year was the site cleanup and installation of art viewable by the public, and that was to be completed by March 31st. Staff was in discussion with the developer prior to that date, and they had noted there were some issues with bad weather that became a problem for finalizing the cleanup and waterproofing of the structure to prevent flooding underneath that property in the garage. So there were some delays with getting that completed by that March 31st deadline. However, that was subsequently completed, and as a part of our annual review, we do note that they have satisfied the things that were necessary to be completed within the past year. So just a reminder, this will be an annual review to the Planning Commission, so you'll see another update in another year. So that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions of staff, starting with Commissioner Maruzzi? Commissioner Donenfeld?
No.
Commissioner Hirschman?
When was that completed?
When was that completed?
I think it was done in May, but I'd have to ask the developer to confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Song? Commissioner Irvin?
No.
You pulled this, Commissioner Hirschman. Do you want this to go forward as a full...
All right, I'm ready to vote.
Can I have a motion?
I'm making a motion to accept the agreement as being proposed by the staff.
Is there a second? It would be, the motion would be to accept the review. Is there a second? Commissioner Irvin, second. Can we have a vote, please? This was approved unanimously with Commissioner Lewin absent. Okay, public hearings. Our first public hearing is Steve Aguilar on behalf of Montavo Enterprise LLC for a conditional use permit to operate an 8.74 square foot cannabis manufacturing, cultivation, transportation, and distribution facility within an existing building located at 1251 Montavo Way, units B through E, the M1P Zone, Section 07. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, the item that you have before you is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for a cannabis facility that will include both cultivation and manufacturing. In terms of the application, you may recall that this was before the planning commission back in October of last year. The planning commission at that time found that the application, based on the submitted plans, did not meet the findings 2, 3, or 5 relative to the criteria for approval of a conditional use permit. The criteria in particular were relative to impacts to adjacent businesses and uses. The item was appealed to the City Council. The City Council heard the item in December. The applicant at that point in time submitted updated plans for the City Council to review. Based on those updated plans, the City Council voted to return the item to the planning commission for you all to look at the updated plans and evaluate their compliance with our conditional use permit criteria. Let me just describe briefly some of the things that have been updated since you last saw the plans in October. Our concerns as staff, when we initially reviewed the application, were relative to the conditions of the existing building, and then also the tenant improvements that they were proposing. We didn't feel at that point in time that they were adequate to contain the odors from the cannabis operations. What they have done is revise the plan significantly to address the following. Number one, relative to the exterior of the building, they will fill all gaps, holes, and penetrations, and then they will use a layer of closed cell spray foam on the interior of the walls, so that way they can adequately provide a closed shell of a building. In addition, they're going to be constructing new interior walls and ceilings, primarily around the cultivation and manufacturing and drying rooms, so that they are basically creating a box within a box construction, as we've seen in other approved facilities, and creating an airspace around those particular rooms and the exterior shell. In addition, they're employing two different types of filtration in the primary odor rooms, the cultivation and manufacturing rooms. It will both be the city's standard requirement, which is the carbon air filtration, and then they're using a proprietary photohydroionization. I can't say that word. PHI is a much better way to abbreviate that. Another filtration system that they will describe to you in detail during their presentation. In addition, they're also providing airlock spaces, which they hadn't shown on their plans before, not only between all primary odor-controlled rooms, but also between the new ceiling that's being built and the external roof of the structure. The airlock spaces, in addition to all the primary odor-controlled rooms, will also have carbon filtration as well, so that air will be treated. And then, as I had mentioned, a new ceiling will be constructed with an airspace above it. In terms of the plans, here is the newly updated plan showing cultivation facilities of just over 5,000 square feet. They'll have a manufacturing room of just under 500 square feet, drying rooms totaling 460 square feet, and then a shipping area of 504 square feet. In this plan, you can see a yellow line around the exterior of the facility. That represents the spray foam that will be applied to the interior, the exterior walls, to provide that airtight barrier. And then the red line that you see around many of the rooms within the structure is the new wall construction that they are providing.
Can you change the slide to what you're describing?
Yes, I'm describing...
Okay, sorry. I thought you were working from the...
No, I'm describing the yellow line at the perimeter of the tenant space, and then the red line that's just inside of that. Moving on to the actual construction details, just looking at this top detail here, this shows how they're using the spray foam on the interior of the exterior walls, the air gap in between, and then the new walls that are constructed. So again, there is a buffered airspace in between the exterior wall and the new walls that are being built. In addition, in the construction details, they do show how they are treating any penetration, such as junction boxes in the ceilings and the walls, and then the treatment of the new walls inside in terms of the taping of the drywall and how that's constructed. These two details are critical in terms of the odor control plan that is being presented and is being shown in the updated plans for you to review. One of the other things that I had mentioned is that they are building the box within a box construction. You can see here that the red line represents the new interior ceiling that is being built and insulated. The orange area shown here is the airspace, and then the yellow line represents the foam treatment that will be applied to the underside of the roof. So within that airspace, that is also being treated with both the carbon filters and the PHI filters. And so again, there is a primary filtration and a secondary filtration area before any of that air is exhausted to the exterior. As I had also mentioned, there are airlocks in between the cultivation rooms and any exterior door to the exterior of the facility. And so this represents a significant advancement in the plans and what you reviewed back in October. The applicant, just earlier this week, requested that we modify the application to remove the type 7 manufacturing. They will not be pursuing type 7 manufacturing, which is volatile extraction. They will only be doing the type 6 manufacturing, which is the non-volatile extraction. So I just wanted to point out that the applicant has requested to eliminate type 7 manufacturing from their application. If you were to approve this, staff will update the resolution, the conditions of approval accordingly, to prohibit type 7. The updated plans and updated odor control plan have been reviewed by the city's odor control consultant. We do have them available here today. They have reviewed the proposed plans relative to numerous codes, including the city's requirements relative to odor control. They only had two minor corrections to the odor control plan relative to the room volume and air changes per minute rate that's shown on those plans. We included that documentation as attachment number 11 to your staff report, and so you have their review and their comments as well. In terms of our findings, based on these updated plans that have been provided to us, the application conforms to all minimum standards listed in the zoning code in section 932315 for cannabis uses, including separation requirements from protected facilities. Based on the proposed construction enhancements to this building, and also the new mechanical systems that are proposed, it is our assessment that this will reduce or eliminate the impacts of the proposed use, and based on that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit with these revised plans. In our conditions of approval, we do reference the updated plans. These would be the basis, if this application is approved, for reviewing their construction documents that they submit, and then also the construction inspections that would take place if the facility were to move forward. That concludes my report to you. Again, we do have the city's odor control consultant here, and the applicant has a presentation for you as well.
If it's acceptable to the commission, could we have the odor control consultant come up and speak, and then we'll ask questions of staff?
Does he have a report?
And you'll be able to ask questions, if they're here?
Good afternoon.
If you'd introduce yourself and give us your report first on this, and then we'll have questions of you.
Okay, my name is Matthew Torrey. I am a principal, one of the principals at 15,000 Incorporated, and we have been tasked with reviewing odor control plans on behalf of the City of Palm Springs for compliance with the odor control template and the provisions set forth within. In reviewing the plan, not to reiterate too much, but I reviewed what was just presented to you, the various plans there with the airlocks, the air exchanges. And essentially, what I found was that the level of filtration that is being proposed now is three times above what the city is currently requiring. And in addition to that, and that is extended to carbon filtration. In addition to that, the photohydroionization is also being implemented, which adds an additional safeguard and level of odor control that is not required of the city itself. And in my findings, I found that, let's see, there were essentially just a couple of typos. As mentioned before, the room volumes didn't correspond with some of the airflow rates. I made mention that to correlate those two together, and that was my only recommendation, to be perfectly honest. The rest of the plan met the provisions and all the requirements set forth by the odor control template.
At this point, I'll take questions for the consultant. Commissioner Maruzzi, can I start with you?
Just to reiterate for the audience, excuse me, you're an independent consultant hired by the city to review these documents, and you have no...
I have no vested interest or anything at stake in this. I am an impartial third-party reviewer.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donenfeld?
I'm curious, to what extent does the foam really make a difference? Or is it, I mean, visually, it seems to be a bit more protective, but would you have the same result if you didn't do the foam? Is the foam more for an appearance sake than actually keeping odors out?
The foam will stop various air leaks within the building. And so how that translates to odor control is dependent upon how the building itself is pressurized. If there's slight negative pressurization, and the less leaks you have, the less air that's coming in. If it's slightly pressurized, the less air that is being moved out of the building. Essentially, the applicant has shown that they're trying to go above and beyond to minimize any sort of air leakage in the building, especially as it is an existing building. So they're trying to mitigate any leakage points as best possible.
What are they doing with respect to the roll-up doors, and how are they handling those? Because I know they're caulking a lot of the outside of the building. Are they going to seal those doors, or will the building inside of building make them nonusable?
From what I could tell, and I can let the applicant speak more to this, from what I could tell, they will still have the roll-up doors as it is part of their operations. However, the box within the box will separate the cultivation spaces from that use. So it's essentially another barrier level between the roll-up door and the cultivation areas. So there's no direct link to them.
So the roll-up doors won't be accessing where cultivation and manufacturing is occurring?
Not from what I've seen.
How about those other entry doors? It looks like they're doors, just regular doors beside the roll-up doors.
They are. They're meant to be airlocks in those spaces. So from what the plan indicated, there will be continuous carbon filtration at each of the entry points. So if there is a door, I mean, they're going to have to pass through various spaces. So at some point, a door is going to be opened where some odor can leak out. If it gets into those airlock, it is continuously filtered, and as stated before, at a level three times above what the city is currently requiring.
When you say odor get out, you don't mean get out into the outdoor space?
If they're opening a pass-through door from the airlock into their, into their facility, let me have a plan up in front of me. So say, for example, they're going from an airlock into their cultivation space, or into one of the equipment rooms, because they're going to have to pass through there. So if there is any transference of odor in there, essentially, the airlock's already been closed. So they open, they open the airlock, enter that, close that door, and then they enter, say, the cultivation space. And so when that pass-through's open, if there is any odor that does escape at that point and goes into the airlock, it's being filtered at a very high rate of air exchange.
So in other words, if the, let's say I'm entering from the outside, I would enter a space that has already been fortified by another airlock before you get into anything that would be odor-producing?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hirschman?
Referring to the slide that's up on the screen, there's three doors, I don't know what the direction is, but say drawing north, which is the top, there's a couple of doors there into the green zone, and I'm sure, assuming the green is the odor-producing areas, is that correct?
That is correct, but what...
So there's two doors there that don't have airlocks. Is there a reason for that?
I'm not entirely sure, because the plan itself...
Go ahead and address that.
Oh, thank you.
As you'll note in the drawing, the red line is the new wall construction, and so they are basically sealing off those doors.
So they're abandoning those doors?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Exactly.
You said three times the filtration rate. What does that refer to?
I'm sorry.
The amount of air being circulated?
Yes, let me clarify. Three times the air exchange rate. So right now, the city requires that the room volume be exchanged 20 times per hour. So 20, yeah, 20 air exchanges per hour. What the applicant has currently proposed are 60 air changes per hour, or essentially one air change every minute.
Okay. Do we ask staff now, or not? We come back?
I think what I'd prefer to do is finish questions for the consultant.
Okay, I'm done.
Commissioner Song?
Could we go to the billing section slide? Okay, so do you see where it's highlighted in yellow, where the underside of the structure is being sealed? Did you also take account that between the inner ceiling on the exterior walls, between the inner ceiling and then the underside of the wall, was that accounted also to be sealed?
Yes.
So that sort of cripples...
It's an additional barrier. So what you're seeing in orange up there between the yellow and the dashed red line, for lack of a better term, between the orange and the green zones there, is another air barrier, and that air is continuously exchanged as well. So an affected axis, very similar to the airlock itself.
Okay. And it's bounded by obviously six sides, if it was a rectangle?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes, can you kind of speak a little bit to the type 7 that's going to be removed? Can you speak to a little bit of that, and the difference between a 6 and a 7?
Well, there's quite a bit of difference between 6 and a 7. 6 is more expansive in terms of what manufacturing is allowed in there, and at the same time, it's also limiting. So it extends in terms of how it relates to type 7. Ethanol is allowed to be used for a type 6 extraction processes, whereas type 7, you would have, say, butane, hexane, methanol, pentane, any sort of volatile solvents. So really, it's a difference in the solvents being used.
So the smell?
The compound in which the trichomes are stripped from the plant material. Sorry. So essentially, when they go and strip, in order to make the oils in the first step, they have to use a solvent. And a type 7, the solvent itself is volatile, so it has a greater potential for hazard. Whereas a type 6, ethanol is considered a non-volatile substance or compound in this application.
Okay.
I have one or two questions for you. The, in the drawings and the abandonment of the doors, do, should we be, you're confident that the doors from the green rooms have been abandoned, and that's why? that the doors from the green rooms have been abandoned and that's locked, or is that something I should ask staff?
That would be a question for staff.
I won't ask that question. Then the other is, what's been recommended? Will you have any role in examining the structure after it's been constructed to make sure that it's being done to the level of air exchanges, of containment that's in these plans? So do you play a role with the city as a consultant, reviewing the built structure?
That currently is a bit out of my purview. What would end up happening is a licensed mechanical engineer would then be tasked in taking these schematic diagrams and turning them into engineered documents that meet the criteria and the narrative, or the provisions set forth in the narrative of the odor control plan itself. So this document, so the document that has been presented by the applicant is something that the city can essentially use as a checklist. Do they have this required air exchange that they have stipulated in here? When the engineer goes through and does their, provides their documents, they will specify fans that meet these airflow requirements, and that is one way to check that the submitted, or that the engineered products meet the narrative.
And you're, but you don't play a role in that? That's done by the city in terms of, in plan check determining that the plans meet the specifications and the promise?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, questions for staff? Commissioner Irvin? Commissioner Song? I'm just going down the line. Commissioner Hirschbein?
One of your slides showed conformance to the zoning code. Could you put that up for a second?
Certainly.
So recently, the zoning code was changed relative to location of cannabis uses. Is that what this section refers to, the new code or the old code, or how does it relate to that?
It refers to the new code relative to the new requirements that are in place. However, relative to the district in which it is located, as you stated, there has been a change. That based on the new ordinance, which was approved by the city council in December, cultivation and manufacturing would no longer be permitted here. However, because they had filed their conditional use permit prior to the adoption of the new ordinance, the new ordinance had language that stated that anyone who had an application in process couldn't move forward through that process.
I got that. My question, I got that, but my question is, under the old code, which this was submitted under, does it conform to those distance requirements?
Yes, it does. It conforms to the 600-foot minimum separation distance between cannabis facilities and protected uses, which are parks, schools, playgrounds, et cetera. So yes, it does conform to that.
To the old code?
Yes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donenfield.
I have no questions.
Commissioner Marutse, I have a couple. In one of your slides, and this is to the director, you said that it will minimize or eliminate impacts. There's a fairly big difference between minimize and eliminate, and I was, I have questions about your choice of language.
As you've heard in the report from the city's odor control consultant, the applicant is proposing mechanical systems that are three times more efficient, if you will, than what the city requires as a standard. While I cannot guarantee in the review of the plans that there will be no impacts whatsoever, I don't know that anyone could, there are support systems and safety measures in place which indicate that based on the equipment they're using, based on the construction details that they're proposing, that there will be limited, if any, impacts from the odors generated by the use. So that is what I was implying.
Thank you. And then some questions. In other cannabis manuf, or grow facilities that we've seen, we had a number of things that don't appear to be here. One is, and they're fairly mundane, so stay with me, one is bike racks, and I didn't see unisex bathrooms, I didn't see showers, and we've always had showers for the staff because it can be hazardous handling marijuana in the grow stages. And there was no comment, there is a landscape plan, there was no comment on the sufficiency of the landscape plan, and one item that I haven't seen otherwise, but would love to see, which is electrical vehicle hookups in the parking areas. And can you comment on why we didn't have? And the other is periodic inspections to make sure that the systems, the filtration systems, the two filtration systems in the airlocks, and the other measures are still in effect over the years. So an annual check or biannual check, those didn't appear to be in the conditions.
Let me go ahead and address that. In terms of the requirement for bicycle parking, it would be appropriate for the planning commission to impose that as a condition. Although we don't have a specific standard in our code, it is something that we have required for other commercial uses and is appropriate based on the city's adopted goals and policies. In terms of unisex bathrooms, that is something that the city council has adopted as a policy and is implemented by our building and safety department, but there is no harm in including that as a condition of approval for this. In terms of showers, that would be a condition of approval that, again, would not be required by our zoning code. However, based on the proposed use and addressing the impacts of the use, it would be appropriate for the planning commission to include that. As to the landscape plan, you will see that the applicant included a landscape plan. They have recently installed that landscaping. Based on the plan, it does meet our parking lot shading requirements as required by code. Typically, that wouldn't be required as part of a conditional use permit, but the applicant did provide it, and we did review it, and it is appropriate. Relative to the last point in terms of providing spaces for electrical vehicle charging, unfortunately, we don't have a specific code requirement or city council policy in place currently. However, if the applicant were to voluntarily install that at some point in time, that would be a wonderful thing, but I don't think that we could require that as the planning commission at this point. And as we've talked about, I think just at our last meeting, when we introduced that topic, it's something that we would like to pursue with the sustainability commission here shortly, so thank you.
And the inspections, the periodic inspections?
The periodic inspections, sorry, inspections. We could include that as a condition of approval. I just had a brief chat with the director of special programs. She indicates that having an inspection either at six months or one year would be an appropriate timeframe to require the city to inspect the systems in accordance with the specifications.
Thank you. And the last question is, the doors that look like they're being abandoned, is, do we need language to require that those doors are abandoned, to make sure they are?
No, we don't need to include language based on the submitted plan and the fact that they're showing a wall in front of those doors. We will use this plan as we evaluate the building permit set to make sure that there are not operable doors in the primary odor-controlled spaces.
Thank you. Are there any other, Commissioner Irvin?
Yes, I have another question. Do we know how many cultivations that we have within a mile radius of that location?
I don't right off the top of my head, but maybe as we go through the applicant's presentation, I'll just take a look back quickly to see if I can put that together for you.
There being no other questions of staff, I'm going to open the public hearing. The applicant will have 10 minutes to present. Members of the public then may then come forward. They'll have three minutes for public testimony. The applicant will have three minutes for rebuttal, and at the end of that period, if the applicant would stay at the dais, the commission may have questions of you.
Thanks. Thank you, guys. I'd like to thank the city staff and thank you, the commissioners, for their time and all the service that you've provided. It's been very helpful. My name is Jeff Foltz. I'm one of the partners of this project, and I've been working with David Acosta, our lead architect. Actually, David's been doing most of the work, but I'm trying to take credit. But I think you'll be happy with what we did, and we're kind of going to go over a little bit, revisit some of the stuff you said, but if you can go to the next slide, David. What I want to do is, there are seven layers of odor control, and I kind of wanted to step through those. I know some of this will be redundant, but I just thought, we put effort in this and just kind of wanted to show you guys and make sure you're very comfortable with what we're doing and why we're doing it. We'll go ahead and go to the next slide.
Have you put the timer on?
Okay, thank you. So I wanted to, we're going to start with the PHI technology, because that's, it's something different, and a lot of people may not understand what that is. I know I had to do a little bit of research on it. We have a video that will explain this, but basically what we're doing is we're trying to replicate what happens when the sun produces hydrogen peroxides in the air. That's why outside you have fresh, clean-smelling air. What we're trying to do is replicate what nature's doing inside the building, not only to reduce odor, but it's also going to create a better work environment. If you guys could please play the video, I think, and then we'll talk after that.
RGF's Remy Halo installs in your AC system. When the unit turns on, it produces ionized hydrogen peroxide molecules, which are distributed to every cubic foot of air in your entire home. Every time an ionized hydrogen peroxide comes into contact with bacteria, viruses, mold spores, VOCs, and odor, it quickly breaks down and destroys the air quality contaminants on the spot. The system also passes a charge off to all the dust, dander, pollen, and particulates in the air, which causes them to stick together. That increase in size will make your existing filter equipment more efficient at capturing these particles. The Remy Halo is literally purifying every cubic foot of air in your home at the same time.
Now, as you can see, that's obviously a home unit, but this is the same type of system that they put in industrial units. And again, it's going to be breaking down the VOCs. This is used in hospitals, it's used in hotels, meat, places where they're processing meat, both to get rid of odors and reduce bacteria. So again, we're trying to, it's a new system, and we actually believe that the city might want to use this in a template, because we believe what we're creating is a template going forward that you might want to use for other buildings. And we can go to the next slide. So we talked a little bit about the spray foam, so we're going, now we're going to kind of go through those seven layers, and I'll work from the outside in. You're familiar with this, because Flynn did a great job explaining it, but we'll go again with some different pictures. So in the inside of the metal building, we'll shoot that with foam. And the reason we're doing that is because that's going to create an airtight seal on the outside of the building. Okay, and we'll go next. Sorry, I'm talking too fast, I want to make sure I get to my 10 minutes. Filtered air gap, so again, this is the orange air around, so the facility is, as Flynn stated, is in that red box underneath. So there's, and this air that's around that, should there ever be any kind of little leak of any odor coming out, it would be cleaned in that orange air gap underneath the sealed building. So again, we're trying to do redundancy in any kind of systems to make sure when you're here, the only thing you're smelling is the bakery across the street, because I like baked bread, so that's what I want to smell when I'm there. We'll go ahead and skip to the next one. This is the red line, again, of the facility, and that, we are sealing, as we pointed out, that whole exterior of that building is airtight and sealed. And as you can see, we've got the little junction box there, showing that any penetration in those walls is sprayed foam around there, so nothing's getting out. David, thanks. So we talked about the PHI systems. The PHI systems are deployed in any room that's an odor-producing room, right? So, and that's, so those hydroperoxides are going in those rooms where there's anything growing or manufacturing, or there's going to be, you know, any type of odor-producing activity, and we're trying to destroy the odor in there before the carbon filters actually take it. So we're reducing the amount of odor that the carbon filters even have to clean by injecting the PHI system in there. And then, of course, we talked about carbon scrubbers. You guys are well aware of carbon scrubbers. This is our secondary odor control, and that, again, meets the city standards. We did update, we did update to 1500 Inc., those two corrections, just so you know, so they do have the two corrections that were requested. So we actually have a tertiary odor control system in here, which are Element Air, we have additional carbon and HEPA filters. This is just, we're throwing everything at this, including the kitchen sink, to make sure that, you know, this is the strongest building that we could possibly put forward. We put a lot of thought into how to make sure that this was solid, and that we're building up the neighborhood. This is a very expensive proposition, so you guys know, we're putting, this is a lot of money, over and above, but we want to make sure we're serving the community and the neighborhood, and we're doing the right thing. The containment areas, we've talked about the airlocks, and so, again, what's happening in the airlocks is manufacturing. If you had any kind of odor in the manufacturing, that door is closed, but should I walk out of the manufacturing room in the blue, in the blue area, you can see that that air is being cleansed. So I walk out that door, if a little bit of odor did come in, it's immediately cleaned in the clean air airlock room. So when you open the exterior door and you walk in, there's nothing but clean air in that airlock, so there's going to be no odor leaving through the doors in the building. So summation, you know, we're in compliance with our M1 zone. We purchased this building because it was in this zone. We're complying with the zero tolerance for odor. We're actually going above that. We have more layers than any approval. I've watched the approvals, you know, and we've learned, right? It's, we're learning as we go through this process from things that have done, and we've gone above and beyond that. I do believe what we have here, like I said, is a template building going forward because of the PHI and everything else that we've implemented. I don't want to miss the fact that there's jobs. We're creating jobs. One of the best things about what I get to do in this business is we create jobs. We create a lot of construction jobs, and there's going to be 10 to 15 full-time people that will have work because of this project. Multi-million dollar investment, again, we're really trying to, I mean, we're putting in sprinkler systems in this building. We painted the building, landscaping, fixing the parking lot, we've done ADA work. We're spending a lot of money to increase the value of this neighborhood. We want to leave things better than we found them. Symbiotic relationship, you know, as you guys know, there's bakeries and candy manufacturers in there, and there's a dispensary. I use CBD for arthritis on my left knee. We want to provide those retailers in this building with the products that they need, so we can create the clean oils so they can make their candies. They should be saving money, because we're not going to have any kind of transportation costs. We're basically supplying the other vendors. It should be a symbiotic relationship. And again, we talked about this being a template building. You know, I love the idea that other people that are going to be deploying any manufacturing or grow could visit this facility and say, this is how it's done. If you want zero odor coming out of your building, copy this. And I'd just like to thank you guys. And if you have any questions, I've got the real brains behind the project here, David.
We won't take questions at this point. I'm going to go forward with the public hearing. If there are members of the public who'd like to come forward and speak, you have three minutes. If you'd line up.
I'm Greg Roberts. I'm a resident of A C N A. I'd like to speak about the three criteria, which were the original basis for the denial of the Montalvo Cup back in October. Criteria number two says that the use is necessary or desirable for the development of the community and is in harmony with the various elements or objectives of the general plan. Nowhere in the Montalvo documentation is there any mention of the community, much less any acknowledgement of any responsibility they have for bringing value or harmony to our neighborhoods. We, the residents, have a say, and Montalvo has missed the opportunity to demonstrate that they would be a good neighbor, and they have failed to meet the requirements of this criteria. Criteria number three says that the site is intended use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate such use. As said, this is a 40-year-old building that's required extensive retrofit. I do acknowledge the extensive work they've done on odor control. extensive retrofit. I do acknowledge the extensive work they've done on odor control, and I applaud them for that. However, we have learned that they are not going to use type 7 manufacturing, but type 6. That introduces some other potential issues that I really don't think we know that the building will support the intended use, because it's not addressed in any of their plans. Criteria number five says that the conditions to be imposed and shown on the approved site plan are deemed necessary to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. Well, while they're not going to use type 7 extraction, type 6 extraction does employ ethanol. Ethanol is a highly flammable liquid. It has a flashpoint less than 73 degrees Fahrenheit. It is a carcinogen, and it is a poison. They are introducing risk into our neighborhood, even though they are choosing not to use the more dangerous type 7 methodology. Should they choose to use carbon dioxide or CO2 extraction, there are risks due to CO2 being an asphyxiating gas. Day by day, the literature grows on the adverse events caused by the inhalation of cannabis dusts. In a state that has had way too many wildfire calamities, loss of life and property, why would we consider imposing a fire explosion risk in the middle of a neighborhood on the perimeter of our airport? I do want to acknowledge that the conditions of approval address some of these manufacturing issues. However, I still contend that while I support Montalvo's business, this is not the place for it. They have not met the original denial of the CUP request, and I urge this commission to disapprove.
Thank you.
Shareperson for the Ascena Neighborhood Organization. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. And as you know, Palm Springs does not have a stellar record on the containment of odors from cannabis, grow, and manufacturing facilities. This is quite evident in the desert highlands and the Demuth Park neighborhoods. So today is your opportunity to get it right, for the decision you make today will not only affect two neighborhoods and two schools, but also the air museum, which hosts many Palm Springs tourists, and quite possibly the visitors arriving at our airport. A very unpleasant experience if they were to smell the odors of cannabis as they get off the plane. I want to acknowledge that they are doing many, they're doing a lot more for the odor control, but I would like to ask the city of Palm Springs to require the Montalvo Enterprise to pay the city to hire an independent third party to inspect the updated premises and provide their assessment to see if the plans and improvements they have made really do make this 40-year-old building comply with the requirements that no odors can leak out of the building. In other words, is it truly air leak proof? I understand that the, your odor engineer has inspected the plans and said that they are above and beyond what is required, but I also feel that we need to have an inspection as they put this in to make sure that all of these things are in place. And also, I don't know if it's possible, but could you bring in a, a third party, an independent consultant to run tests, like a neutral odor, that they could put in to determine if this HVAC system really does work? And third, I understand, I believe, that they have complied with the issues the city council required, but I would like you to review that carefully. And finally, when I read your document, it does not state when or if any periodic inspections of the present, of the premises will be made should a CUP be granted. There should be an independent third party inspecting these premises on a regular basis, semi-annually or annually, to make sure that all the equipment, including the HVAC, is maintained and that no odors can escape the building. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Commissioners, and Chair Waramuk. My name is Al-Anne Torina, and I am here representing the homeowners of the Ascena neighborhood. I'm representing myself, and also I'm on the board of the Ascena Neighborhood Organization. We've been here before you, before. My first thing is, I'm going to put a little complaint. I did use the link to try to look at all the material on Monday, but after that, I've not been able to get into the link again, and I've talked with some of my neighbors, and we haven't been able to either. So I actually wasn't able to prepare everything that I wanted to say, because I couldn't get back in and see all the details. But, in listening to what I've already listened to today, I want to back up my two previous speakers and neighbors. And I just was able to take a few notes here. Number one, I would like to ask that very careful review of the building go on with the building permit stage. I know even in the building of my house, the putting in of my pool, et cetera, I don't think things were always inspected the way that they should, or somebody looked another way. So I want to make sure that all of these changes that the Montalvo people have said that they are going to do literally are done. And I, I do applaud them as well for, for making those changes. The, I do want to also suggest that once the building is up there...
Who's, excuse me?
I don't know. I have to, I have to apologize. That sounds like my phone, but I did turn it off.
[laughter]
I am a Barry Mallow fan. I'm sorry. I did make sure I turned it off. That, once this is, is in place, because I have a feeling that we are going to go through, that there is some kind of setup for probably biannual review to make sure that no odor is coming out. I do agree with Greg. I don't believe that this is a necessary and desirable business into, close to our neighborhood, so we were still really against it. And we have no tolerance for any odor coming out. I certainly hope that these things will work. I'm not so sure that I think that they will, but there will be air exhausted from the building, and we want to be very careful about that. So, we just want to make sure everybody goes through very, very carefully if this is going to go through. Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners and city staff. Thank you for your time today. I'm Steve Agalar, and I am speaking on behalf of this project. We've, we've done extensive research and work to get this project to this stage. People are mentioning about we should have people reviewing this and auditing this thing to the nth degree. We've been working with 15,000 Inc. extensively, and have gone through this about four, four to five different times to get to this stage. The project that we now have will probably be one of the most expensive projects in the entire desert community. The layers of odor control that we've done is four to five times greater than anything we've seen get approved by the city already. We are totally fine with abiding by any of the inspections that the city is currently having for their existing cultivation and manufacturing sites, and whatever changes that come down that the, the pike as, as things evolve with the cannabis industry. We have done everything we possibly can to do this to have zero impact on the community. All along the way, we've continued to just find out what, what is the best possible solution we can have. And we started by going to Colorado, the state that's been dealing with this the most and for the longest. And we believe that Urban Grow, the company that we got, is one of the most sophisticated and state-of-the-art companies in the industry today. So, just the, the expense that, to get to this point in regards to the constructions and to go into this is off the charts. But, this is what we have to do to make it an odor-free environment, so we're stepping up. We have just, I cannot say how much we've done to get to this stage. And we really appreciate the city's cooperation in working through this odor control issue. The last thing we want to do is have any neighbors complaining about anything related to this building. And we do believe the fact that it's tucked away and backed into the airport, and pretty much out of the general stream of things going through that area near Ascena and all that, that there just couldn't be a less impactful building. Especially in comparison to some of the things that have been approved over on Ramon, where there's an extremely high density of cultivation and manufacturing, all very close together. So, we hope you will consider this approval today. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, staff. I'm the only neighbor that's here today. I hadn't planned on speaking, but since I'm the only neighbor, I got to speak up. My business is one block east of this cannabis grow. I'm very impressed with the plan to keep the odor contained. However, something isn't foolproof. And my building has roll-up doors that are open all day long because of the business I have, that our workers can get their equipment in and out, and the materials. I'd also, I'm also concerned about the type of clientele there are going to be in our neighborhood coming around. And you mentioned a bike rack. Well, people buy, well, anyway, forget that. But, anyway, I am concerned about having this in my neighborhood. We've been in that neighborhood for 40 years. And we'll see what happens. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? The applicant has three minutes of rebuttal.
I guess I just reiterate, I, I guess I'm one of those clients, because I use CBD on my knee, but, but I, I think the, the business, again, we're, we're creating jobs, we're trying to pay taxes to create, you know, parks. We've done pretty much everything we can possibly do to be a benefit to the community. We are in an M1 zone. I mean, this, we are, we're in the proper zone to have this facility. We, that's why we purchased the building, because, you know, it's in M1 zone. But we've done, I think, I, I think everybody can see, we've gone over and above what we could possibly do to make sure that there's zero odor issues. And this didn't happen without a lot of research and a lot of work by David, the architect. And like, we've gone out to, like we said, we've met with various people that, the PHI technology, that's being deployed all over the United States. So it is a proven technology. What we're doing will work, and we would just like to thank you again for your time. And we think, I think we've put a good package before you. Thank you.
If you'd stay up, if there are questions of the applicant, starting with Commissioner, I'm going to go down the line, starting with Commissioner Irvin. Commissioner Song?
Yes. David, I just wanted to confirm, when you were doing the spray-in insulation on the outer skin of the building, you are doing it continuously from sill plate to the double top plate, or wherever the roof rafter is resting?
Yes, and also the ceiling as well.
Right, the ceiling as well. So you have a...
It's completely continuous across the entire exterior envelope.
So, is it a steel building?
It is.
Okay. So then you're, so you're spraying it, and then a few inches towards the interior, you're going to have an interior wall envelope and ceiling. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Hirschbaum.
Could you go back to that diagrammatic plan for a minute? Yeah, okay. So, uh, why do you need doors, maybe you don't even have them. Why do you need doors to the outside in the rear of the building? Do people come and go in, in and out of that? Is there, is it for service, or just people coming to work or leaving work?
There is only one door to the exterior from the rear of the building, and that is in the top-left corner of the picture that you see there, and it is serviced by an airlock.
Oh, I know that.
The other doors that you have seen are existing doors that are part of the existing facade. So part of this application was to avoid any changes to the existing facade. The way we would treat those doors would be to tackle them for...
No, no, I'm not talking about those. You've got one door in the upper-left-hand corner that's operable.
Yep.
You got a roll-up door in the middle of the left-hand side. Then you got a door in the bottom-left-hand side of the corner. Then you got a door out the airlock to the left. You got a door out the airlock to the right. Then you got a door out to the airlock to the left, and then you got a door out to the airlock to the right. Why do you need all those doors?
Are you talking about on the bottom of the drawing?
Talking about the perimeter of the building. If you start in the upper-left-hand corner, you have a, upper-left-hand corner.
Uh-huh.
You have a door to the outside.
So...
Then you have a door, you have a roll-up door on the left-hand side of the building, right? Left-hand side of the building.
Mm-hmm.
And then you've got, on the bottom, you've got a door to the outside in the orange room. Then you got a door in an airlock, 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 and then continuing to the back, you got another door in that orange space. Why, why do you need so many doors?
So, we have two primarily used doors, and that's going to be at the front lobby area and the rear.
Where is that?
The bottom, far bottom left.
Do you have a pointer?
There you go.
Okay.
Yep. So that's our primary entrance door.
On the corner, or the airlock?
Coming from the airlock.
Okay.
The one in the very far corner is to the next neighboring unit.
Oh, so that's not even your door?
That's correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Okay. The, the other doors along the bottom of that image there, yep, those, to the, to the right of the main entry door, those are emergency egress doors only. So we do provide an airlock in the event that someone needed to open that door for some sort of emergency. But again, that's not to be intended, the intention is not to use those doors for regular exiting.
Oh, and, and the door way, way over on the right-hand side on the bottom, is that also the adjacent tenant?
Yes, that's correct.
So the airlock doors are only emergency exits?
All of them, except for the one that is our primary exit.
And so will they be locked from the exterior?
Correct.
And then what about, and is that a code requirement? Because it seems like you would have enough, you don't have a big occupant load. You could probably get out one, one door through the corridor on the side.
Well, the problem, or the, the difficulty is that both of our exit doors are on the far-left side of the building. So if you go all the, and so we're only providing one path of travel towards those exit doors, and that, before we have two ways, two points of exit.
So all those doors are existing?
Yes.
Okay, so those will be locked from the outside. Then what about the orange room at the top? What, and, and those don't have emergency exits. Those green, green, and orange at the top, those don't have emergency exits?
They're right, because they're not as deep rooms. So you could actually, we calculated the path of egress travel is, does, does fall under the necessary length.
Occupant load?
Well, it's not necess, I mean, the occupant load is so low in this facility, that it's more about path of egress travel to either your exit, or to a point where you could split and go into two directions.
And then why do you need the orange exit?
The orange exit, which one?
At the top, there's an exit door? Oh, no, that's going to be, yeah, at the top orange room.
So, so that top orange room is our actual, it's our roll-up door.
I thought the roll-up door was over on the left-hand side.
A man door and a roll-up door.
Where?
Yeah, so there's a man door and a roll-up door. And that room is designed to be twice removed from any type of odor contaminants.
Why, why, why do you, why do you, so there's a man door and a roll-up door in that little orange room?
Yeah.
And why do you need those?
Those, that's for products coming in and out of the building.
And what about the other roll-up door?
There is no other roll-up door.
Oh, I thought there was another roll-up door in the other orange room. No, okay. And what type of trucks deliver product to your business?
Well, the way it's designed is if we have a larger truck, they will, we will open the roll-up doors, they will drive back in, we'll close roll-up doors, and they will unload anything.
Because our, our preference would be to have a double man door, because those roll-up doors are really hard to seal.
And, and part of this design is that, that, although that room will be treated with air-fault-trading scrubbers, we're not actually intending for there to be any odors in that room at all.
Well, truth is, you don't really know that. You're in a facility that produces odors. I know there's some mitigation equipment in place, but it just seems to me, you know, you're going to the extra length here. We've asked applicants in the past to seal roll-up doors and put in a double man door if you need the width. I don't know if you have, what are those things called? Forklifts going in and out, or it's just people in a hand truck, but you could handle either through a, a double set of man doors. Okay, that's my question. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Donenfeld.
The only question I have is Chairman Womack listed a number of potential conditions of approval with respect to physical facilities at the property. Do you, the ones that she listed, you may not remember them, I can go over them, I made a note of them, but if you do remember them, do you have any problem with us supplying those conditions to your application, your project?
Would you be able to refresh --
Well, I hope I get this right, but I have done bike parking.
Not a problem.
Unisex bathrooms, which I understand is code, you're going to have to do that probably in bike parking.
We already have a unisex.
Okay. Showers.
So we originally looked at doing disposable uniforms as a reason we didn't have showers in there. They were going to have dispose, or actually, a uniform company that would, they would take, they would stay in, and that's why we didn't put that in. We are spending an enormous amount of money to do this. We'd prefer not to put in showers, but obviously, if that's a requirement of the Commission, then we would --
Ms. Womack mentioned that in handling the cannabis product, and perhaps in the, also in the manufacturing process, is it, it gets on your skin, and you take, can it be potentially hazardous to the skin, or other types of hazards to one's personal safety?
Well, we believe that everybody's going to be in gloves and have uniforms, so they should be protected masks. Everybody's going to wear protection. But again, if you feel that a shower is required and needed, that's something, I think we'd be amicable to do that, yes.
And to add to that, I've been in several of these facility, these types of facilities. I've touched the materials myself. There is no, I mean, it's about as dangerous as picking a flower.
I would imagine your solvents are probably more dangerous than the plant itself.
Yeah, and so if you're specifically referring to the ethanol-based manufacturing, you don't actually touch the ethanol. You load the canister to the machine, but that's about as close as you get to the actual solvent itself.
Yeah, and we specifically did not do type-7 manufacturing, because that's the risky volatile, you know.
Volatile solvents.
Yeah, we did not want to do that. We didn't, yeah, we didn't want to have anything, yeah, so.
And inspections that we can talk about. I assume, Flynn, that the city already has a periodic inspection requirement with respect to all of these cannabis cultivation and manufacturing facilities?
We don't have a schedule in terms of when we do inspections. We do periodic inspections, and so including a condition of approval as I --
On a regular inspection, we could do that.
Regular inspection would be appropriate.
And you would not have a problem with that?
We would have no problem with that.
And then the last one is the electrical vehicle charger. How many employees are you likely to have at your facility?
This facility should have between 10 and 15 employees, but I, I mean, again, it's just a cost-effective thing. We're so far over our skis.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how expensive these devices are.
It's not just a matter of the expense for the device itself, but also the infrastructure to get the electrical needs that we have to service that device. So that could be exponentially more expensive.
I'd plead for mercy, honestly.
And the government isn't giving any tax credits or special provisions?
Turns out, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Maruzzi?
Your questions?
I have one, which is really for the consultant on the, it's both for you and the consultant on the ethanol issue. One of the members of the public raised the issue about that being highly volatile or highly flammable.
Well, ethanol is flammable, but it's a non-vol, the state treats it as non-volatile. Volatile is a type-7 license, so the things that they're talking about volatile are propane, things that explode, right?
Right.
So class 6 ethanol is non-volatile per the state, which is why we're applying for a non-volatile license. And CO2 is a sealed system. So the CO2, it's, you put the plant in, you turn the system on, the CO2 goes through it, and it's extracted back. So, yeah, there's no exposure to CO2 as well.
Ethanol is known in the industry as one of the most efficient and effective solvents without being volatile. And without, and by not getting the volatile classification, we are talking about something that does not explode. There is, there is very, it's a very, very safe method and procedure in solvent.
Yeah, explosion bad, we don't want to have it.
Excuse me, Members, the public hearing.
Yeah, I imagine if you were able to open the canister and get the solvent out and put a match to it, it would probably catch on fire. It would catch on fire, yes.
Thank you. And can I just ask the odor control expert a question? Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Unless anybody has additional questions. Just on the ethanol question.
Yeah, and the way that these systems are set up, because I feel like there's a huge component missing, it's, they're based off of, they're controlled based off what's called the lower flammability limit. And so there's a sweet spot for fuel-air mixture where things do explode. And so there are sensors, much like for CO2, to make sure that there is no risk of asphyxiation. If they get above a certain parts-per-million, that a fan kicks on and dilutes the air. With an ethanol system, you'd still have some sort of a hydrocar, it's a saturated hydrocarbon, so you'd have a hydrocarbon sensor that's tied into a secondary exhaust fan, and this all depends upon how your system itself is set up, so that when the 25% lower flammability limit is reached, a fan kicks on to dilute the air back down to acceptable levels. And these are all, these are all measures that are stipulated by the National Fire Protection Association. So NFPA 30, NFPA 36, there are numerous codes that safeguard the use of these solvents.
Thank you.
Yes.
The matter is now, the public hearing is closed. The matter is before the Commission. And what I'd like to do is just get comments from people before we start to formulate a motion.
Madam Chair, there was a question that was asked earlier by Commissioner Irvin about any other cultivation facilities within one mile of this location. The information that I have is that there has been an administrative permit issued for a location on Research Drive, which is on the west side of the airport, but they are non-operational and have not obtained a conditional use permit. And then there is another facility that is outside of the range but is north of Vista Chino. It has been issued an administrative permit but is also non-operational. So we don't have any other operational cultivation facilities within the distance.
And we do have two class 6s in the same building, correct?
I believe we have a type N, which is the infusion. I don't know about type 6.
I don't remember, I remember there was a second.
Yeah, there was, I believe we have two infusions in the same building.
Two infusions. Okay, this is before the Commission for comments. Commissioner Maruzzi, you want to go first?
Since the applicant first proposed this in October, I think they've come a very long way to dealing with the concerns about odor. And, you know, I have to say that the city has hired an independent consultant to review this. And if we don't, I don't want to say trust, if we don't have confidence in that person's evaluation, then I don't understand why we have that person at all. And we were the ones that requested that as a Commission, probably starting two years ago, that we have an independent consultant to evaluate this, because we didn't feel like we were capable of doing that ourselves, which we really aren't. So I have to, I have to rely on the science. And the science apparently tells us that this is about as good as it'll ever get in terms of odor and odor control, and I have to rely on that.
Commissioner Donenfeld?
Yeah, I'm, first of all, I'm a resident of Palm Springs, and I sympathize with Acesina and anyone else who lives anywhere near a manufacturing or cultivation facility for cannabis. And yet we do live in a complex and varied community here. And we want to make sure that we balance the interests of the quality of life for our residents and the commercial enterprises of our community, business community. This applicant has really done a tremendous amount to address our concern, which is odor. I mean, these are technologies that I did not know existed, and if I had, we would have brought them up perhaps to earlier applications that we saw, because the carbon filter was, at first, the only thing that was told to us as being state-of-the-art with respect to odor control. These three levels of protection are not, we don't, we can't say guaranteed, there won't be some odor leakage, but I think it's the best we can do. They're entitled to their permit. They applied for it under the old law. The Council was very specific that with respect to pending applications, the prior law would apply to them. So I'm disposed to approve this application. I would be very sensitive to accepting conditions, particularly those Chairman Womack has mentioned. I do think it's a little bit excessive to require an electrical vehicle charger for 12 employees, and it's not going to be a public facility. So we want to encourage electric facility chargers, but I don't think this is the right project for that. But I'm in favor of staff report. Thank you.
Commissioner Hirschbein.
I'm pretty conflicted on this one. I appreciate the extent to which the applicant has attempted to mitigate what could be a big problem. I, and Commissioner Maruzzi makes a good point, we should be trusting our consultants, or have confidence in our consultants, because I think you said. But we've had consultants before make certain statements to us that we've questioned, and rightly so, I think. I know they applied under the old rules, there's reasons for the new rules. I'm not sure how I'm going to vote on it, I'm still conflicted about it.
I, I'm in agreement. I, there're not going to be too many more of these because of the ordinance that have been passed towards the end of the year, toward the end of last year. But I want to point out that these are businesses, and so far, the overall imagery of the dispensary business is that they take an old building, they're going to hide their business back there, the building is still going to look dilapidated. They're not going to do anything with the landscape, and they're going to make oodles of money, and they're going to benefit from this. And this is one of those cases in which, through this whole entire process, you have come with three times the system that is basically required. And that's, that's because you're still in the fight, and you want to show us that this is going to work, and this is going to respect the requirements that the public so importantly are concerned about. So I say that we do have a three-month, a six-month, and a year, because it says, three months since the operation, we're going to measure what the leakage is. Well, not we, but we're going to have a plan implemented. If in six months there's no issues, then let's extend that review process a little longer, so they don't have to be bothered by it. But if there are issues, then the public will call the city, and then the city will take steps as well. But I think it's important that, that the applicant has done what they need to do to improve the building, both from the inside and the outside. I'm disappointed with the landscape, because I want to change this face that when you do business in Palm Springs, it's not only what you do inside, but it's how you present the business to the public street and to the public pedestrians. So the landscape on Montalvo is disappointing, and I know you're putting all these trees, but we have a wonderful AAC in which they could review and give you some direction, or you have an architect, and they could put something together. So you are part of this improvement that happens in the business manufacturing district in Palm Springs. But other than that, I think that having the conditions that we're putting together, let's see if this three-time process is actually going to work. Not let's see, it is going to work.
Commissioner Irvin?
I kind of would echo kind of the same thing that the other Commissioners have said. I just want to make sure that the items that Commissioner mentioned earlier is added in there. And I just want to make sure that we're doing inspections and making sure that this project meets everything that we're asking for, and kind of just make sure that we're doing everything that we're supposed to do. That's just kind of how I feel about it.
I share the same conflicts. As a matter of disclosure, I live in Acesina, the people here are my neighbors, I've heard their concerns. And if the Council hadn't taken the action they took in December to say that after, with applicants from the time the new ordinance went in, these kinds of facilities would be on the other side of the freeway, I would have had, I wouldn't have been able to say that this was necessary for the health and welfare of the community. But we're in a spot where the Council has taken actions, the community requested, and specifically said that people who had applications in prior to that should be viewed under the new odor control standards, but they should be, they should be given consideration because they took steps when it was legal for them to buy the building and have an expectation. So I'm going to support this, but I'm thinking about the conditions that we have in it. I do think that Commissioner Hirschbein's requirement or mention of the man doors instead of the roll-up doors is correct, that we need something that we know that can have a lock on it. Can you come back on that point after? I'm not making this as a motion yet, I'm just kind of saying what I think we should do. That's the one architectural thing that I think we may want to give consideration to. I do think that the bike parking, the unisex bathrooms, and the showers are all important. I would want to refer the landscape review to the AAC. I know the applicant has done, has put landscape in, but I do think that there should be an appropriate review of this. And in terms of inspections, I think the six months and three months to make sure that things are incorrectly and that they're working. And after that, the city take action if they're not, but after that, a biannual inspection to make sure that the systems are in place and they're functional, so that the filters would --
Who's doing the inspecting?
I think the city should, I think the applicant should pay for an inspection, and the city should choose an inspector of their choice.
And what is it they're inspecting?
I would want an inspection that the systems were correctly put in, so that you've got the filters in place, that the foam is working, that the airlocks are in place, and then they're inspecting to make sure that it does not, I think they can check for odor leakage, that's hard, that would probably be hard to determine on a set appointment.
The key thing that they would need to inspect is the filters, both the carbon filters and the PHI system, to make sure that the filters are being changed per the maintenance schedule, and that the systems are in operating condition. So those are the key things.
I think that's, that's the inspections that should happen. So that's kind of where I am on it. I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have voted approval for this if, it wouldn't have come to us with the new conditions, and I agreed with what the Commission did. But I think we have to be very careful, not just because my neighbors are here, but because there is an even closer neighborhood in El Rancho Vista, there are other businesses in the area, there are two schools, there is the Air Museum, and there's the airport. And we want to protect the people that are in that business park, we want to protect the neighbors, and we want to protect our cultural institutes. So that's probably where I would go. I'm conflicted about approval, but I think, I think this is, I think the Council, we've been really directed by the Council to do this in a good-faith way and work with this applicant. So I don't know, Maria, you had questions, and I don't know if people agree with what I've just said.
Well, I wanted to touch on two points. One is that -- One is that for Michael Comment under the shipping and airlock, they do have a double door off of the hallway that's already with airlock. They have two of them.
Where's the double door?
Those are double doors right there. So that's already a...
No, I know. Yeah.
Yeah.
And raising the electric vehicles is raising it for the future so that we can, we can eventually institute a requirement and standards for when that would be required. I don't think we need to do it here.
Chairman Womack, I have one question regarding the roll-up door. I know we've been very sensitive to roll-up doors and how they can be a problem with these facilities, but what I'd like to know from the applicant is, what kind, and I think Commissioner Hirschbein touched on this, what kind of delivery vehicles are required for this facility, and can a double mandor accomplish the size of delivery vehicles that are going to be going into that facility?
And maybe if the architect would come up.
Sure. To answer your question, the concept here is that a full-sized, U-Haul-sized truck would be able to back in, and we can completely close off the space.
Can you, so the truck is going to be in the space?
Yes. And then we close the door behind it. That space itself, although we don't get that same airtight seal at that door, as we all know, but that space is still going to be conditioned at three times the rate to maintain odor control in that space. And the only type of cannabis-like material that will ever see that space is already going to be packaged and ready for distribution, which will be in its own airtight sealed containers as well. So we're treating this space as if, there's just very little chance that we're going to see odors in that space at all. We're already triple treating that air. And then we have a, and then we're also twice removed from where the cannabis will actually be held. So the probability of air getting through there, I think it's about as likely as air going out the front door, or anywhere else.
I don't know how comfortable I feel with requiring the shower. Do we want to have some more discussion on that? It had to do with your concern, Chairwoman, about the employees being exposed to...
I do know that we've required it in the past. I know that we've required it in the past.
The past, and maybe what I'd like is our consultant to come up.
I thought the reason why it was requested was because of the showers related to the bicycles, that people would have a place to shower.
I believe that's generally what I understand. It's to promote, it's to promote people bicycling to work. Yeah, that's right.
Was that not true? Does anyone remember when we required this? It was, wasn't it related more to people riding their bicycle?
In certain cases, I think it was. I remember when Commissioner Woods was on the planning commission, typically on other uses. For cannabis, I think we've looked at it both not only for those who are riding bicycles to work, but there's also been a concern that those who are exposed to the plants or whatever processes there have the opportunity for showers.
And did I hear that, was it our consultant, or who, somebody said that it's probably not necessary based on the...
Applicants.
Of the applicants, because of the gloves and the uniforms they're wearing? I mean, I will go with what the commission, I just don't think it's required personally.
Well, I...
Because it's expensive for them, and they've put in a hell of a lot of money, as it is, trying to meet all the requirements that we've brought up before.
I think what I'd rather do is hear from our consultant in terms of the safety of the workers. So if the consult, our older consultant would come up...
But he's a mechanical engineer.
Ah.
He's not going to have expertise in...
But I believe he is pretty familiar with the process and business operating.
He's not coming down.
He's scared.
I do apologize, my area of expertise is not in PPE, personal protective equipment. However, in most of the facilities that I have been in, there are gowns, there are gloves. Yes, there is resin from these plants that gets on your hands and can get on the workers. So it's really about a 50-50 mixture. My personal opinion really is that if, if there are gowns, if there are gloves, if the workers are adequately protected, then yes, then the showers aren't required. If for some reason, the gowns are not required, if they're not using gloves, which I can't imagine, because even with the shower, if you've ever tried washing it off your hands, it takes a long time. Even with isopropyl alcohol, it takes a while to get off your hands. So I cannot imagine why they would not adequately protect themselves when going into this environment.
So then the question is for the applicant, are you providing gowns and gloves, and you have a service so that every, every worker would have those on?
Yeah, yeah. They, we do, are proposing a uniformed service to provide those gowns and gloves, and make sure that they're clean for the arrival of the employees.
Is there a way of conditioning that, Flynn?
As a condition of approval of the conditional use permit, you might state something to the effect that PPE, I believe is the term, personal protective equipment, is required for each worker in the facility, and it can be something as simple as that.
Fine.
Okay, so just to reiterate, we're asking them to provide a landscape plan concentrating really on the frontage of Montalvo. We're also asking them about including the personal protective gear or cover as part of their program on how they manage and use of the facility with their employees. I think those are the two that are...
Bicycles. Bicycle. Flynn, do you want to read the list back?
Yes. Here's our list, as has been edited by the planning commission. Number one, the applicant will be required to provide bicycle parking. Number two, even though this is in our code, unisex bathroom will be required. Number three, inspections of the mechanical system shall be required at three months, six months, and then on a biannual basis by city staff. The next one is that the landscape plan shall be referred to the Architectural Advisory Committee with the concentration on the Montalvo Way frontage, and that personal protective equipment is required for each employee of the facility. And then I would add one to that list, as I had mentioned earlier, that type 7 manufacturing shall be prohibited.
Flynn. One of those. I think the inspection was by a third party of the city's choice.
Okay.
Paid for by the applicant.
I have a question about that. What is the city's current in-house resources with respect to regulating this industry, and specifically with respect to inspections?
Ms. Goodheart could come forward and perhaps talk about the inspection program.
We currently work with our code compliance, and a lot of our code compliance has building and safety background as well, and they are the ones who inspect, and they do regular actually inspections for odor control weekly. So they have a schedule where they're going out to all operating businesses in the city regardless of type, and inspecting them for odor. So we are very proactive with that. We do take it an additional step further. We have had a problematic area, and we've had 15,000, in fact, they were there earlier today, inspecting all the recommendations that were made to improve the odor control. So it's something that we are constantly working on. And like I said, those inspections, they have a weekly schedule where they're going to every business to check primarily for odor.
But do you have the ability to check to make sure that the filtration equipment is working? Is that an inspection that you typically do?
That is when we call for 15,000 to come and help us inspect, and they will be working with training staff here. That's part of our...
15,000 is an outside consultant?
Correct.
I'm sorry.
Yes, that's our city's odor consultant, and...
So if we put this in on these periodic bases, you can call 1,500 in to do that?
Correct.
Thank you.
It just seemed to me that rather than put the applicant to an additional expense of paying for a regular inspection by a third party, if we had the in-house capability along with their consultants, it's more of a city function than it is a private third-party function.
I don't know if she, she said that they don't charge for that. Do you charge for that? I don't want to make it free if they charge.
If we require 15,000 to come...
You would charge for that.
There is a fee, because that's a fee that the city's paying.
That makes sense.
Thank you. So it is at the applicant's expense. So we, those are the conditions. Is there discussion of these, or are we at the point that someone would like to make a motion?
Based on the conditions listed by our director, I make a motion to accept, approve the application with the reports that has been provided by staff.
I'll second that.
The find, the three findings that the city council required, we make. I think we need to add that.
And that is included in the resolution that you have attached.
Okay. Can we have a vote? This passes four to one. Five to one, sorry. Would you like, yes, I think we'll take a five-minute break.
Thank you. How are you?
Calling the meeting of the planning commission back to order. We're at item 2B, TPE Enterprises LLC, for a conditional use permit to allow cannabis manufacturing type N and distribution within a 5,595 5,595-square-foot building located at 1235 South Gene Autry Trail Zone M1. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair. This slide that is before you today, right now, shows the Gene Autry, South Gene Autry Trail Business Park, which is off of Gene Autry Trail. It consists of a series of seven buildings. Some are single occupant, and then some are attached. The applicant is proposing to take 1251, I'm sorry, 1235 South Gene Autry, which is the building that is encircled with the red box. So it is at the end of a private driveway that goes to a cul-de-sac and ends up at the space that they're proposing for type N cannabis manufacturing, which is the manufacturing or infusion of chocolates and other candies. So there will be no cultivation or testing, but it does include distribution. Obviously, they have to move the product out. So let me go through some slides here to show you what they're proposing. So this is the space that is currently constructed and underoperated there, which is the building on the right. There is proposed to be one roll-up door, which is existing, and there's a man door adjacent to it. This is the front entrance to the space. This is looking back towards the parking, where there's an existing dumpster. And then there is a gated service yard, which is behind the gates that slide. And in this picture, when I was there today, the gates were open. And this is the front entrance. So you'll see that there are areas around the space that include some palm trees that are there. But mainly, the park is devoid of any sort of landscaping or other vegetation. And that has been in place for several years since the building was built in the early '80s. So moving on to the site plan. As I mentioned, it's serviced by one driveway that goes into and services all of the spaces. There's a series of parking there at the end of the cul-de-sac. There are three spaces that are on the exterior of the gated service yard, and then seven spaces inside the service yard for the use of the applicants or the occupants of the building. In your packet, there is a floor plan that shows the type of activities that will occur within the space. You'll see that there's areas for the infusion of chocolate and then other candies, gummies, and so forth. There are also break rooms, restrooms, office spaces, conference rooms, and then areas where the packaging and distribution will occur in the space. There is an odor control plan that was included in the planning commission packet. It has been reviewed by our odor consultant, and they have given staff an approval letter for the odor control. They're proposing to the facility, we use professionally-installed HVAC system. And this drawing shows the units on the roof that will be screened by parapet around the building. The HVAC system will continuously bring air into the building and eliminate any rogue venting, and then intentionally vent the exterior after running it through a series of molecular filters, including pre-filters, HEPA filters, and carbon filters. The rooms related to the infusion and packaging will be closed environments. And all areas will be exhausted with complete air exchanges in excess of six times per hour and will operate 24 hours a day. Filters are placed regularly to replaced regularly to ensure that their infectiveness is maintained. In our staff report, there are conditions of approval that include adequate air filtration is implemented, and odors will not be detected. As you previously had the case that was cultivation, which has the potential to have quite a bit of odors. This material that is brought into the site is already processed and is then infused into the chocolates and candies. So there is less potential for odors to be emanate into the air. The exterior of the building is not proposed to be changed. There will be no repainting of the buildings. It will be consistent with the rest of the industrial park. There is no request to change roll-up doors or man doors at this time. So in your staff report, there are findings that the planning commission will need to be made that are requirements of the CUP application. Notice was sent out to all property owners and occupants within 500 feet of the property. This planning department has not received any correspondence from any adjacent or budding property owners regarding the application itself. There is a series of conditions that I mentioned. And if there are conditions that the planning commission would like to add regarding bike parking, which is not there is no bike parking on the proposed plan. Unisex restrooms, there are if you look at the floor plan, there are two types of restrooms that are single occupant and wheelchair-accessible, so they could easily be unisex bathrooms. There are no showers proposed in the site. And as I mentioned earlier, the materials that will be used to infuse the candies and chocolates may not expose the workers to the types of resins that would be in a cultivation facility. And the planning commission may choose to provide inspections of the mechanical equipment at a certain series of time over the year, if the planning commission feels that that's necessary, once again, three, six, or a year. So that concludes my report, Chair. And the applicant is here and would like to make a presentation.
Is the odor control consultant still here? Yes. Do people have questions of the odor control consultant? Should I call them up? Yes, please come up. And then we'll have questions of staff.
Thank you. We have had infusion facility applications before. And we're all getting, thanks to you, cannabis technology wannabes. But my question is, as I recall, when you infuse candy or whatever with the
Distillate?
solvent, the word I'm looking for is this
Distillate?
Distillate, thank you. That's very chemistry-oriented. When the distillate goes into the product, into the edible, the distillate itself is basically, since the terpenes have been taken out of it, are basically odorless.
That is correct. That is correct.
They're odorless.
Yes.
So this product that is being infused will be odorless.
It's another baking ingredient.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Marutse?
So why then would any of this odor control equipment be necessary?
Because for cannabis facilities, under the jurisdiction of Palm Springs, require an odor control plan and level of filtration to safeguard against any possible odors that could be in the space.
And you don't believe any possible odors would?
No, I do not. I've designed a chocolate facility myself. And in the kitchen, we did not put any carbon filtration.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Commissioner Hirschbaum and Uncle Delano?
So the distillate is like an oily substance?
Correct. After the plant undergoes the extraction process
Someplace else?
Yes. So like in the previous applicant, they would make the distillate, which then the TPE would now use in their application.
And that distillate has no odor?
Correct.
And that's true of all distillates of cannabis?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, so it has no odor. And then they add, they could bake with it, they can make candy with it, they can make chewing gum with it, or whatever.
That is correct.
But no odor, okay. So I'm good with that.
Commissioner Song? One question is the employee safety. Do they need to wear protective gear?
I mean, this does fall under the guise of a food facility. So the proper precaution should be taken to protect that environment. I've not seen PPE worn in terms of gowns and things like that, because the materials themselves are not hazardous. As mentioned previously, it is just an additional ingredient that goes into the batter, for lack of a better term, right now.
Okay. And just in terms of Palm Springs requirements, the last facility was required to exchange air 20 times per hour, chose to do it 100. This one is six times per hour. Is that what's in our guidelines?
That is more reasonable. The guidelines state the room volume divided by three. But that is a provision that is for the cultivation processing and is not really applicable to the infusion process. Right now, the reason that there are six air changes per hour is because of the ventilation rates that are required, outside air ventilation rates that are required by code. And so that essentially amounts to six air changes per hour once all is said and done.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Questions for staff? Commissioner Song?
Glenn, there is no even though they have a lobby, per se, it's not a public interfacing business, correct?
No, it's not a public dispensary or lounge that the general public would come in. So I'm sure they have their security plan that would secure the material, and only authorized personnel would be able to get into the building.
Correct, thank you.
If there are no other questions, the public hearing is open. The applicant has 10 minutes. Members of the public would have three to comment, and the applicant would have three for rebuttal.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Ivy Bader, and I'm with Global Go. And I have been working as a legal analyst on TPE Enterprises' project, located at 1235 South Gene Autry in the Business Park. This business will be going into a vacant building. I want to talk a little bit about the business plan and some of the specifics. We'll have about 11 employees in total, for which we have plenty of parking. The operation hours will be 8:00 AM to 5:30 PM, Monday through Saturday, and closed on Sundays. For the square footage of the building, the total square footage is 5,595 square feet. Of that, 1,990 square feet will be devoted to office space, hallways, and break rooms. For manufacturing, we have 2,594 square feet. For distribution, we have 655 square feet. We expect monthly or bimonthly orders to be coming into the building. As we spoke about, we will be creating infused products, gum drops, hard candies, and chocolates. I think we pretty much spoke extensively about the odor control plan. So if you have any questions, please let me know. At this point, I'm going to pass off the remaining time to Dan Sayen, who is our master edible maker. And he'll be able to provide he's absolutely amazing. He was the head of Disney Edibles. So he is absolutely amazing. I'm going to invite him yeah, I'm going to invite him to come up here and explain a little bit more about the manufacturing processes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ivy. Madam Chair, Council. First, I don't think there is a master baker title except on maybe the Food Network. I have, however, baked for the past 20 years. If you've been to any of the theme parks in Anaheim, or Hollywood, or Carlsbad, there's a good chance you enjoyed one of my cookies or brownies, or scones, et cetera. I've worked with chocolate for the past 20 years and enjoy it, both at work and at home. As a matter of fact, as far as bicycling goes, I would welcome a bike rack and would be I'd be bringing my bike inside the building, but would welcome a bike rack. I'm an avid cyclist, and I understand the city's need to promote bike trails and all that goes with that. The processes that we will have I did hear our odor control expert mention baking. I've baked for the past 20 years. We won't do any baking. We won't do anything that involves ovens and venting those ovens. We're going to melt chocolate at a temperature that's just above 100 degrees, so it's very low-temperature melt, and then reform so it's very low temperature melt, and, and then reform it into bars or squares. The, the candy making process, the, the scent that erupts from the candy is just honey and butter, it's a very pleasant scent, similar to the chocolate, and I feel very comfortable with our odor control plan, that we would never be a cited for, for any kind of odor in the area, and I've walked the area myself, and, and don't smell anything from any of the other businesses in the area either. It's a little different from my experience in the baking business, because as I said, we did vent, and you could smell the, the blueberry scones were the, were the strongest scent, you could smell from a good, good distance. The, the abject dangers in, in our building would be involved in temperature with candy making, we will wear smocks, but we'll go a, a step further in that, in that, the, the candy is heated to about 300 degrees, and if you've ever made candy at home, you know, that can, that sugar solution can pop and crackle, and, and there are burn potentials for that. We will have covers on our kettles, and instead of the product being transported manually from kettle to machinery, it will be pumped, and our workers will not be exposed to any high-temperature product. They'll be pouring in sugar and tapioca syrup at, at room temperatures, and then leave the rest to the equipment. So I feel very comfortable with our, with our plans as far as the safety of our workers will go. I've employed more than 100 workers for more than 20 years, and have not had a, a, any, any fatalities or major injuries in, in my, under my watch. Knock on wood, knock on wood. Great, with, with that in mind, I've used up half our time, unless there are any questions.
Are there questions of the applicant? Are you the, one of the principals, or are you?
Yes, yes, I would be one of the principals.
Just wanted to ask you the question, since you're an avid cyclist, would you be willing to put in a shower? Would you like to put in a shower?
We would, we would absolutely entertain that. We, it, I actually hose off outdoors. I, I've done this in my facility, and, that I had in Riverside, but certainly open.
So, great, okay.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
I don't think there are. Are there questions for staff? I have one for staff, if there are none others. Flynn, Flynn or Glenn, they have, they're showing two bathrooms. Can one of those be, get, and they have, they're anticipating 11 employees, could one of those be a shower instead?
That would be a question that I'd have to see with the building department. I don't know if they're required to have two bathrooms, or not for that square footage, but we can check with them, and if that's, if it's not the case, then one could be turned into a shower room.
Okay.
It looks like they have a laundry room there, too, that maybe they might use the water or the plumbing, or something like that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Song?
Yes, I'd like to continue that discussion. So California Code has also a subsection that is a California Green Bill standard, in which they do encourage bicycle rack, bicycle storage, and showers. But in the practical sense, also, I've seen many offices that started with that idea, and then this shower ends up being a storage, because people don't use it. And so my alternative would be for the shower consideration to be according to the program that the applicant sees best, and not impose it as a requirement.
So in terms of the motion, there's, it, I could take comments, but the, I'm taking the quietness for assent, we need a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, are there members of the public who'd like to comment? The public hearing is still open.
Hi, my name is Rick Pantelli, and his partner is in Tennessee, got sick. He was going to fly in today and speak too, as well. He asked me to come and speak on his behalf. Senator Allen Simpson said, "If you have no integrity, nothing, if, nothing else, if you have integrity, nothing else matters. If you have no integrity, nothing else matters." I've been working with this group since last November, and they are full of integrity. We should be very happy that we have them coming to our city to do business, and I wanted to make sure that I got up here to make sure, to tell you that they're very professional grown-up businessmen. And then to tell Commissioner Hirschbein, who I saw him say ice cream, that I think that ice cream might be down the road, one of the edibles that might be made by them, but they're going to produce what will probably be some of the finest edible products that will be purchased in, in Southern California. These aren't just words, this is real. This is a real company, dedicated with real talent and real commitment, and as far as them working with the city for the bike racks, we had a long talk about the showers and the bike racks, and, and whatever it takes to make it right for the city, so they're here for the long term, and they're here to make everything right. And that's coming from both myself and from Mr. Livingston, who's in Tennessee and could not make it here today. Thank you very much.
The applicant has three minutes to, is there anybody else from the public who wishes to speak? The applicant has three minutes to rebut that comment. Any rebuttal required? We, I think we are in agreement, the two items that I have heard, one is a requirement for bike racks, and the other is to allow the applicant, if it works out, to put in a shower, and I guess unisex bathrooms, and if they can, to substitute one of the bathrooms for a shower, if they so choose. Any other comments? Would someone like to make a motion?
I would make approval, I would approve the staff report and the findings contained therein, along with the conditions Chair Wermick just stated.
That passes 6-0 with Commissioner Lewin absent. Item 2C, do you need this continued?
Yes, I do need a motion and action by the planning commission. Again, staff is recommending that we continue this item to the March 11th Planning Commission meeting. The intent is we will have the new application from the orchery developer on the agenda with this item as well, so again-
And the item is, just before we do that, the item is New Church 2 LLC for a time extension of entitlements to renovate the existing historic community church, an orchery inn for adaptive reuse, and demolish portions of the site for construction and operation of a hotel with accessory spa, restaurant, meeting space on a 3.1 acre site located at 222 South Cahilla Road. And we've had a staff report. Commissioner Hirschbein, you have a question?
From staff, for staff? So at that time, if they're presenting a new plan to us, will they also have to apply for an extension of the existing entitlements?
Yes, that's what this item is, that's what 2C is, is an extension of the 2016 entitlements. So what you'll have on your agenda is a request by them for a new application, for a new development, in addition to a request to extend their 2016 entitlements.
How do you do both?
One would basically cancel out the other, so if the new project is approved, the 2016 entitlements would no longer be valid.
And if the new title, entitlements are approved, oh, so what order will we be reviewing?
You'll have the new application first.
Okay, so if we approve the new application, then the extension goes moot?
Essentially, yes.
Goes away?
And?
Moot, and, I'm sorry. In the new application, are we starting from ground zero with any business agreements that are made between the city and the applicant?
The land use entitlements are separate and distinct from any other agreements the city may have in terms of the transient occupancy tax, I think that's what you're asking.
Yeah, what's the status of that?
The city council has given them a timeline to perform in terms of the transient occupancy tax, so they will consider an extension of the transient occupancy, occupancy tax to the new project.
And that's totally the council, that's not us?
Correct, that's the council's decision.
And has the design that they're intending to submit to us on the 11th, will that have gone through AAC by that point?
It will have gone through the Architectural Advisory Committee and the Historic Site Preservation Board.
Has it already?
It's scheduled for Historic Site Preservation Board next week, AAC has already seen it.
And approved it?
And recommended approval.
Okay, and if HSPB does not approve it, what would the status of the March 11th meeting be?
I, I don't know at this point in time, it depends on what the action of the Historic Site Preservation Board is.
Could it potentially stall our review?
Potentially it could, but it's hard to say.
Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions? Before you do, I had asked the direct, the planning director to supply us with the timelines that the city council has for the TOT extensions, not for our deliberations, but just for information as a part of that package.
That'll come on the 11th.
That'll come on the 11th. I entertain your motion.
To, to approve the delay till the 11th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh. I need it up.
Gotta be fast.
We are at new business, this is not a public hearing. It's item 4A, Tarif Talala of CHIC LLC for an amendment to land use permit 12047 to extend current hours of operation and include outdoor live entertainment and sound application as a part of a business operation at Village Pub located at 266 South Palm Canyon Drive. Staff report, please.
Thank you, good afternoon. As introduced, this is a request submitted by Village Pub to amend its current land use permit to extend its hours of operation, and also to conduct outdoor sound amplification and live entertainment as a part of their business operation. The project site is located near the northeast corner of West Barista Road and South Palm Canyon Drive. Its primary frontage faces South Palm Canyon Drive, and its rear renovation faces a public parking structure. The general plan and zoning designation of the subject property is both central business district, in which outdoor entertainment and musicians are permitted subject to land use permit, and as well as the city's noise ordinance regulations. The Village Pub is a full-service restaurant, which currently operates from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, seven days a week. The business is permitted to conduct indoor live entertainment, such as DJs, shows, and karaoke, and the building accommodates two dance floors within the building, however, business is not permitted to conduct any outdoor live entertainment or outdoor sound This is to show the, the floor plan of the building. The highlighted area is the actual building, the floor area. The inside accommodates a dance floor, serving area, kitchen, and office, and the pedestrian path separates the area from the other building, which is located in the southern part of the, the property. And these are the images to show the existing conditions of the property. The second floor accommodates a bar and a dance floor, and actually, dance floor has a portion that's fully enclosed, an area that's not fully enclosed, and these are the images of those areas. When staff conducted a site visit, staff observed the location of an existing sound amplification equipment to be more like the speakers at A locations along the corridor. The applicant is proposing the following changes. The, one of the changes that's been proposed is the extension of the hours of operations. Right now, the business operates from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, the applicant's proposing the extension, and the new, the proposed hours of operation is 10:00 AM to 4:00 AM, seven days a week. There are no proposed changes to the indoor entertainment, however, there's just minor changes to the activities, so the staff noticed those changes. Outdoor entertainment and outdoor sound, sound amplification are not permitted. Applicant's proposing a live performance involving a maximum of two musicians performers for weekdays for a period not to exceed four hours maximum, between 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM, and one performance per day is proposed. Also, for Saturdays and Sundays, DJ dancing, karaoke production shows in the patio area for a period not to exceed four hours maximum, between 10:00 AM and 10:00 PM, one performance per day is proposed. For the outdoor sound amplification, applicant's proposing the use of outdoor speakers in the outdoor patio area during the business hours to play ambient music. In addition to the items that's mentioned, the use of amplification speakers in the, in the unenclosed portion of the second level dance floor, located at the rear of the pub during the business hours from 10, excuse me, 9:00 PM to 1:30 AM, is also proposed for Fridays and Saturdays, and the use of the dance floor during the weekdays will be limited only when special events take place. Dance floor area is not fully enclosed, and it is adjacent to a public parking structure. Following, after, excuse me, after receiving this application, staff routed all submitted materials to multiple C departments for comments and review, and based on the, the comments received from those departments, and also the letter of support the applicant submitted, staff finds the proposed amendment as follows. With regards to the extension of the hours of operation, according to the police department, they will not be able to provide adequate patrol for the area after 2:30, to be exact. And then for the indoor entertainment, no changes are proposed. For outdoor entertainment, two indoor dance floors are available, which are suitable for activities that generate noise, and therefore limiting permitted types of outdoor entertainment for Thursdays when Village Fest takes place, is desirable to minimize potential interference with the event. And as for outdoor sound amplification, ambient music can enhance patrons' experience and can, can function as a noise buffer. The second level dance floor is not fully enclosed, and it will be challenging to retain the sound within the space, therefore, the maximum allowable noise level, excuse me, and also the maximum allowable noise level decreases at 10:00 PM. In order for this land use permit amendment to be approved, the two things have to be addressed. The first one is the impact of the proposed use, and the comparability of the proposed project with adjacent properties in the community. Staff finds that the extension of hours of operation to 4:00 AM raises a security concern for the site and the surrounding communities. Second, the controlled ambient music can enhance the experience of the place, given that it fully conforms to the city's noise ordinance regulations. Third, types of permitted outdoor live entertainment to be limited on Thursdays to ensure that it will not interfere with Village Fest. And based on the letters of support, live entertainment previously conducted at the property did not cause any noise disturbance, and then also the closest residential use is, excuse me- And then also, the closest residential use is located approximately 760 feet away from the site. And the sound amplification in the unenclosed portion of the second level dance floor to be concluded no later than 10:00 PM for the use to be compatible with adjacent properties and the community. To ensure that the comparability of the project with surroundings and to minimize any anticipated impact of the project, staff is recommending the following conditions. Hours of operation to be limited between 10:00 AM to 2:00 AM seven days a week, as recommended by the police department. Ambient background music, the use of outdoor amplification is permitted to provide ambient music in the outdoor patio area between 10:00 AM and 2:00 AM seven days a week. Second level dance floor, this is particularly for the area that's unenclosed. The use of the area with the sound amplification is permitted on Fridays and Saturdays between 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM. The use of the space with amplified sound shall be permitted for one additional day during the week for a special event between 5:00 PM and 10:00 PM. Just to clarify, the second level dance floor has an area that's fully enclosed, and this is a regulation that's specifically designed for the area, that's not enclosed. As for indoor live entertainment, this is already permitted under the current land use permit, and staff recommends the same conditions to be continued. And outdoor live entertainment for weekdays excluding Thursdays to be something that involves a maximum of two musicians' performers for a period not to exceed four hours maximum between 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM. Per day, live entertainment can include, excuse me, the live entertainment may include the use of sound amplification equipment, however, it shall not include DJs, karaoke, or dancing. Only one performance is permitted per day. Outdoor live entertainment for Thursdays, excuse me, outdoor live entertainment can be permitted between 10:00 AM and 9:00 PM for a period not to exceed four hours maximum per day. The permitted activities shall be limited to acoustic performance, which involves one or two musicians only, and only one performance is permitted per day. Outdoor live entertainment for Saturdays and Sundays, the entertainment is permitted between 10:00 AM and 10:00 PM for a period not to exceed four hours maximum per day. Permitted activities include DJs, dancing, karaoke, and productions and shows. Again, only one performance is permitted per day. And finally, the outdoor speakers. The installation of four additional speakers in the outdoor patio area is actually proposed by applicant, so staff included that condition as well. And based on the informations we received from other departments, letters of support, and zoning code regulations and so forth, staff recommends the planning commission approve this project subject to the conditions included in the draft land use permit attached to the report. And this concludes the staff presentation, and applicant is here, and...
This is not a public hearing, though.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. So this concludes the staff presentation.
Questions for staff?
I have a question.
I'm gonna start with Commissioner Marutzi and go around.
What is the conflict with Village Fest? I'm not understanding that.
When the staff forwarded this material to the Office of Special Events, which handles a Village Fest, they are concerned that by permitting outdoor entertainment and outdoor sound amplification, that may be overpowering, it's gonna interfere with activities that take place on the street.
The booths, the other, I guess they're booths, right, that are being, that are on the street?
Correct.
So it's too loud for the booths?
Bands.
They have their own...
There are bands and street performers.
Well, they would compete with this music?
Correct.
Oh, I see. You can see how often I go to Village Fest. All right.
Commissioner Herschel? I'm sorry, Commissioner Donfield?
It looks to me as though what you're, what I understand is that for many, many years, an unpermitted use has been going on outside with respect to performances and ambient music, which many people seem to like, and it's been an important part of the Village Pub. And you're suggesting that that be brought back with certain limitations?
Has it gone away?
It's gone, well, it's gone away because the land use permit never permitted it. It was a, it was a, it was a non-legal use of the land use permit. So you wanna re, you wanna bring that back under a legal framework?
That is correct.
But with respect to the extension of the hours, what goes on on the second floor, and all of that, you're not permitting that, is that correct? So you sort of wanna bring it back to where it was originally, even though it was nonconforming?
That is correct. For the hours of operation, right now, it operates from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM.
Right.
The applicant is requesting the hours to be extended from 10:00 AM to 4:00.
And you didn't, no.
Right, but however, staff is recommending that the proposed hours of operations to be limited to 10, between 10:00 and 2:00 AM.
Right.
And as for the use of sound amplification equipment on the second level dance floor in the unenclosed portion...
Not be allowed.
It is permitted between 5:00 and 10:00 PM.
Even though it's not enclosed, even though there's, there are basically open spaces?
Correct, the area is right next to a parking structure. And also, all activities that take place on the property are subject to the city's noise ordinance regulations. Even though the intended use is, excuse me, the use of the space is a dance floor, these are the regulations that we are imposing as recommended conditions.
With respect to, as I understand it, the applicant only wants to serve food from 2:00 until 4:00, no alcohol?
That is correct.
Is permitted. What do we know in the central business district? What other restaurants, other than I can think of IHOP, have been given approval to operate until 4 o'clock?
Actually, the attachment to the report, attachment number 13, gives a list of how similar businesses are operating in the city. And based on this study that staff conducted, none of the comparable business operates after 2:00 AM.
There is none.
There is none, other than, I know IHOP is open all night.
Yes, IHOP, that is, right. But the list of businesses that are included in attachment are businesses that requested some type of entertainment and sound amplification.
I see. So there are other restaurants serving food from 2:00 to 4:00 in the central business district? There are not?
There's none.
Okay.
So IHOP's not in the CBD?
I guess not. It's a little bit south of the CBD, is it?
It's on Ramon, so it's still considered to be part of the central business district.
It is.
Yeah.
So that food is served all night. And Denny's is not, Denny's is in the design district, it's not CBD. Okay, thank you.
Have...
Commissioner Herschel?
Have there been reports of security issues at IHOP or Denny's during the 2:00 to 4:00 AM?
We recently had a community forum relative to homeless issues, and there have been reports of issues in that parking lot that the police is currently looking at. But I wouldn't say it's exclusively just to patrons who are there at IHOP. It's other issues associated with the community.
So...
Issues of homelessness.
Okay, but in terms of the customers going to these two establishments between the hours of 2:00 and 4:00, have there been problems associated with that?
Not with the patrons.
Okay, okay. And then, as far as the 2:00 to 4:00 portion, are they requesting any kind of outdoor sound amplification during that period?
No, as it was presented earlier, there is no outdoor amplification proposed between 2:00 and 4:00.
Okay, okay. I have another question. Oh, can you define what you mean by one performance per day? There's four hours of, you can have, so it's one guy for four hours? Can't have one guy come up for two hours and another guy come up for two hours?
It's a performance done by one magician, yes, so just one performance by one magician.
For four hours?
Correct.
But it couldn't...
Up to two, yes, one or two, up to two musicians.
Right, but it couldn't be like two guys singing for two hours and then two ladies coming up and singing for another two hours?
Yeah.
That would be two performances.
That was not staff's understanding, however, the applicant's in audience says otherwise.
I'm just trying to understand what one performance means. You already limited the hours it can be, but what does one performance mean? I don't understand what that means.
And also with respect to karaoke, how do you determine...
Excuse me, Commissioner Herschel has the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just...
Okay.
It was related to you.
What does that mean, one performance? I don't understand that.
Meaning that they are able to have only, I should say, one activity per day, to be more specific.
One activity.
Right.
So could an, would an activity be two people singing and then another two people singing?
Well, that was not the staff's understanding. The staff's understanding was that musicians or band can include up to two individuals performing or conducting one activity per day for a maximum of four hours. That was the staff's understanding.
Number one, it's confusing, and number two, I don't know how you'd enforce it. You'd have to have somebody out there with a stopwatch or taking a census or something.
The applicant is, based on the conditions of approval, the applicant will be required to record what kind of activities take place, what day, and that is what we are recommending as a condition of approval.
They record it and then do what with that information?
If the city needs the information, the applicant has the information ready for review.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Song? Commissioner Irvin?
So with the, with the recommendation, are you not recommending that they have it available from 2:00 to 4:00? Is that...
The staff is not recommending the extension of hours of operation from 2:00 to 4:00.
You have more questions?
I have some. Your recommendation said no complaints, but we've had complaints from adjoining businesses, from the adjoining hotels, and letters from the public. How have you taken those into consideration?
When staff reviewed the proposal, staff contacted the police department, called compliance for any records that are pertaining to this property. And based on the information that we received, there was only one, particularly something that pertains to the noise, there was only one incident back in 2019. And for the reason, the staff is recommending that there will be a six-month review of this land use permit.
By planning commission?
Viewed by planning commission or by staff?
Yes, that is correct, by the planning commission.
The, the reason that you're not recommending extension of hours to 4:00 AM is there's no police available.
Correct.
So that, that's something that I think, from my perspective, we have to take into consideration. How do you define ambient? I looked up the dictionary definitions of ambient. An ambient says soft background. Do you define ambient as lower than the city's noise level, say five decibels lower? Do you define it in time, in terms of the type of music, that it's background music? How do you define it?
Let me jump in and respond to that if I might. In terms of a definition of ambient music, we don't have one in our zoning code. What standard we have used in the past on other applications is that patrons must be able to carry on a conversation while the music is playing in the background. But we haven't put a standard to that. And if you'll remember correctly, that was one that we've applied to a couple of businesses where we've had outdoor amplification. What I might recommend to you is, in discussing this with the city attorney, we are not able to limit the type of music that's played, but where we have the most ability to perhaps define what ambient music is, is by the decibel level. And so what staff might recommend to you, if you want to clearly define what ambient music is, is perhaps it is at a level that is perhaps 10 decibels below what is listed in the city's noise ordinance. And so that might be a way to perhaps define or capture that term of ambient music.
And then, when I read the staff report, it said no subwoofers would be included in the music system. A number of the people that wrote to us suggested that we utilize the standards that we had used in Infusion Beach, and it seems to me that those standards would work here, that they're legitimate, although it said that there were no residents within 700 feet. There are three hotels that I believe are closer where people are sleeping, and we've had complaints. So utilizing Colony 29, Infusion Beach, standards in this would make some sense in terms of no subwoofers and controls on the level of the music.
Actually, those conditions pertaining to noise attenuation measures included, and that was actually taken from, or I should say, the idea was taken from Colony 29 and Infusion Beach.
And so it's the same standards?
Yes, very similar, yes.
The applicant wouldn't have the ability to raise the levels beyond the level, that the, the music levels would be preset?
Yes. If you see the, one of the materials, the staff included an addendum, this gives the summary or comparison of conditions of approval pertaining to noise for Colony 29, Infusion Beach, and Village Pub. And as you see, the noise attenuation measure that's included in the conditions of approval is very similar to the one that's imposed on Colony 29 and Infusion Beach.
And the, the hour limitations, I think we have both the same mountain issues of bouncing off the mountains in certain wind conditions. Do we, do we think we have that condition here that we had in Infusion Beach?
No, I believe we do not have a conditions about the sound. Just ask for clarification, are you referring to the direction of the speakers or...
No, it wasn't the direction. My understanding is that the only, the only times the city has ever permitted outside ambient music has to do with the V Lounge, the V Wine Bar, which was ambient. I'm not sure what we did with that.
I think we, we approved it at, where the Hacienda, you know, what is it?
HSF, Hacienda.
Well, prior to HSF, the, the guy that, the guy that did the hotel, no, the guy that did the hotel.
It went, the hotel...
Chris Pardo. We had some ambient music in that one, I remember.
Right, but that didn't...
Well, it didn't get built, but we approved it.
So, but we've got, we've got these, and what I'd like to do is possibly for Flynn and staff to look through which of the conditions from these three most apply to this. I'm just concerned about, we do have neighbors. And the commission may not agree with me, but I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned that we have had... And the commission may not agree with me, but I'm, I'm concerned, I'm concerned that we have had, we've had about 10 letters of complaints and neighbors from the adjacent hotels and, and a good operator. So I think we want to marry the two of those in a way that we don't have these issues in the future.
I'm seeing that they are very similar in terms of what we're suggesting for the Village Pub conditions, more so with Colony 29 in terms of some of the specific standards. So I'm comfortable with what we are proposing to you unless there's some additional restrictions that you'd like to apply. One of the things that you suggested was the definition of ambient, which we could add as a condition of approval. The only other thing I can suggest, if you have concerns about the direction of the speakers, certainly that's something that we've looked at, at Oscars.
Yeah, and the direction of the speakers, and, and I'd be concerned about adding additional speakers since we have concerns from the neighbors. I, I do want the facility to function, but I, I don't want to add, I don't want to change conditions in such a way that we're adding additional noise.
Ian there, um, it kind of looks like the speakers, the way they have them set up now, are facing back to the alley that they have in the back of the building.
I think that speakers are down, aren't they? If the applicant-
We, we took 10 down and we'd like to put four back up along the side.
So you took 10 down, but you want to, this that you asked-
Ms. Blaisdell, if you could come to the microphone, although your voice carries. We do need you, we do need you on the system, thank you.
If you just say, since for the record, just say your name again.
Diane Blaisdell, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you.
There's a couple of, just clarifications would be, is they initially had 10, um, outdoor speakers, took those down in connection with the citation that was received because of course they wanted to be, uh, in compliance until they had come before you to essentially get grandfathered back in. They would like the opportunity to put four back up in the same locations in which they were previously located.
So you're not asking to put 14 back up, just four?
Correct statement.
So you're only asking to put four back up?
Correct statement.
That's certainly-
Yeah, it, correct, there's, are some existing, there was a bunch existing. 10 came down, they'd like to put four up.
But, but 10 came down for a reason. I know.
They were in violation.
I know, so-
And so that we were, they did what they should have done, which is attempt to comply.
Which, which involved reducing the number of speakers?
I'm sorry?
Attempting to comply included, this is a question, attempting to comply included taking down 10 speakers?
Correct.
So how would adding four more, uh-
Because they were unaware of what the limitation was at the time until we had-
Wait, let me finish.
Okay.
So you, you took 10 down to comply, now you want to put four more back, or four back. How, how does, how do you remain in compliance and do that?
If it's a term of the LUP, would, we would be in compliance with that.
Michael, they were, they did not have an, an LUP that permitted them to have outdoor amplified music. And this went on, this was a non-conforming use for a long time. So they're asking for an LUP that will permit them to have outdoor-
So all of the outdoor speakers were removed?
And if the applicant could come up-
David Mariner, we had held an event called Pub Chella, and so we had outdoor music, and that is the incident where we had-
Just the numbers, that's all we care.
There's 12, uh, in the back that are existing right now that are up. We would like four for a total of 16.
And before you had 22 up?
Correct. We took them down for a complaint that we had. We thought it would be enough to take them down the front.
So what you're saying is 14 speakers instead of 22?
Ambient speakers, correct.
Okay.
They're, they're not loud speakers?
Or 16, and-
Are these only for the ambient music or are these for the-
Correct, for sporting events, for just-
No, wait, wait, are these only for the ambient music or are they also for karaoke or, uh, the entertainers or other reasons?
They could probably be used for karaoke. It would be the only other event we'd use it besides ambient.
So could we restrict it to ambient? Flynn?
Yes, as part of the land use permit, you can place conditions on the speakers, number of speakers, et cetera.
Okay.
Good, thank you. Could you just go over what the noise limitations are that you have in the, in the application? I'm just, I'm looking at, at these three things, sorry, but I'm-
No, we're not, no, 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 we're-
Because I don't see, I don't see the limitations that look like, any of them that look like, um-
If you go to page four of the attached draft land use permit 19 dash 102, it's actually, um, condition number 18, conformance to the noise ordinance, and it gives the permitted maximum noise level.
Okay, that, that to me isn't sufficient. I think we want-
Are you seeing condition number 17, noise attenuation measures?
I'm, I'm trying. Okay.
This is the one with-
I didn't realize I needed to read the conditions in the land use permits, so I didn't see them in the LUP. This is fine. So if we can go through, I know I raised some concerns, and the whole of the commission may not agree with me, but I would like to see the am- the definition of ambient be 10, uh, 10 decibels lower than the noise standards. So that we have a definition of ambient, so we know what soft, uh, softer conversational music level is.
Would that be, would that be an an, a definition that would apply to Oscars and, and others that have-
Oscars was unique because Oscars didn't have residential around it.
Also, I don't think it's fair for the applicant to be asking Oscars.
Yeah, I don't think you should, you, you should sit back down, please.
Oh, I guess I can. With all due respect, this is a central business district, and this is where entertainment should occur. And the distance to the Del Marcos and others, I think is sufficient that I would like to go with what the staff is recommending and not add any additional conditions. I just think that it's a, that the, the staff has done a good job in analyzing what's appropriate and taking into consideration that some of the concerns the police have and so on and so forth. But, um, I, I, I wouldn't want to add any other conditions regarding ambient sound or anything else. No, I don't think so.
I'm, I'm concerned that we'll establish a precedent on one case. I think if we have an issue regarding ambient, we got to look at it and make recommendations to city council so that we have a statutory definition, but just to lop off 10 decibels and say that's ambient for one case, I don't think that's an appropriate action for us to be taking.
I agree.
And I agree with Peter. You know, when you go to a hotel in any city in a central business district, you have to put up with, with, you chose to be in the middle of the mix, and if you chose to be in the middle of the mix, those are the consequences that go with it. You don't want it abused, of course, but if it's within the guidelines and ordinances of the city, so be it. And, and I lived in, on Baristo for a long time in, in this, in, in the historic tennis club. I never heard a thing. I mean, it just wasn't part of my experience. So I think the staff report is perfectly adequate. I, but, but, but it is limiting. It's not, it's not giving the applicant everything they're requesting, but I think it's a reasonable compromise.
I, I'm, I'm going to go further and, um, well, number one, we're reviewing this in three months. So if any members of the public or homeowners or business owners have complaints during that three-month period, they should make that known to the police department or whoever you need to make that known to because then we'll get that report within that three-month period. No, you can't do that. But, um, uh, I'm kind of troubled that we're discriminating against them if we already have two restaurants that have operation-
What, can I just answer that first? We've done this on an ad hoc basis.
Well, I'm just giving you my opinion, that's all. And, and if they confine the food service to the indoors, then I think it eliminates a lot of the street people acti- you know, potential problems and, and, and would confine the noise as well. So I, if anybody's on board with that, I, I would approve the two to four conditioned on just doing it inside.
Maria? And we're going to, I think what I'm going to do is, on the various things, we'll vote on it. We'll give a sense of what the commission feels before we formulate a motion.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement. I, I think Noriko has done a tremendous job. I mean, something as complicated as this, this is so fluid, and you broke it down and you itemized it. So, I mean, kudos, Flynn in hiring her, good job. And, uh, and I know that you went extensively to investigate, to count the speakers, how many came down and how many you have agreed. So I, I say, um, that I agree with the staff recommendations.
And I also as well echo that same thing, but, um, also with what Michael said, I, I kind of agree with him. I mean, there's two other businesses, um, there hasn't been any situations, um, people are still, they won't be having any alcohol, they'll be eating, um, I'm kind of for that. So I would agree for the two to four to be added in there.
So we've got a couple of issues. I just want to say that I think the commission has been doing some of this on an ad hoc basis because the city had a, a policy of no outside music, period, before the commission made some of these adjustments. And that's perfectly appropriate. The city's going to be doing the noise ordinance on, and figuring out what they're doing with it. Starting on March 25th, there's a staff report going back to last year with a lot of recommendations. Uh, I'm just, I've been uncomfortable with us being ad hoc. And I, and I, I do, I agree with Commissioner Donenfeld that we should be getting a definition of what ambient is. If we're going to be approving ambient music outside and we don't have a definition, I think we need one for the zoning code in the future. Hopefully, we can get us a standard from city council and put some urgency to city council that we do need a new, a new noise ordinance that takes into consideration the needs for some of our businesses to have music and the, the safety of our residents and the, the ability of residents to sleep peacefully, including our hotel residents.
Madam Chair, I would like to ask you a question.
Before we get there, we've got two, two items that I think we wanted to vote on. I don't see any seconds for my suggestion on reducing ambient, defining ambient. I think the only issue that came up was whether or not we allow the food indoors from two to four. And I just would like to get a sense from people as to where they stand on that before we make a motion. And your question's perfectly fine.
I would like to hear from the applicant, their reaction to the staff recommendation. I mean, if you, just in general, if, if, if the staff recommendation was approved by this commission, what is the reaction of the applicant to that?
It would be thank you.
Oh, there you go.
It would be thank you. On the two to 4:00 AM issue, um, there is a misnomer, I think, that some of the police department was under the, the misconception that we will be having music. It will not be having music, it is strictly for purposes of, of, of dining. A lot of industry people who are getting off from the casinos, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock, they want to go someplace and eat. Also, if you think about it, um, it's much better to have people stay on site and eat something between two and four than drive to IHOP or drive to Denny's. It would be something that would be, again, as you suggested, my client is perfectly fine with, would be a, a six-month review of what has transpired and, and how well Village Pub has done and will do.
I think we, in the staff report was-
Six months.
Oh, it is.
So do we want to, uh, the, we have the request for the food from two to four and the police response to it. Can I just get a show of hands of what people?
May I have one question? The, the police are against this, right?
Yes.
They're against it. And, and the only way I can differentiate between IHOP and Denny's and this facility is-
They're not bars.
They're not bars. And after people have been drinking until 2:00, even though you might say they want to calm down and eat a burger and maybe that'll absorb the alcohol. People, after they've been drinking for a long time, you don't know what they're likely to do. If they hang around a place, trouble can happen. And I think we have to listen to the police on this. I mean, they're the experts when it comes to crime and, and commercial facilities like this.
Other comments?
Yeah, um, in most cases with that situation, they go to Denny's or they go to IHOP. So, I mean, the police officers are saying that they're, um, they're, they're not working, but, I mean, the people are still going to Denny's and IHOP after the club lets out. So you're, you're having that, that crowd going there.
I, I'm okay with looking at it after three months and seeing if it is a problem.
Or, or what do you think of maybe just having it Friday and Saturday, just to try it out instead of having it seven days? It's another.
Maria, where, what's your feeling on this?
The IHOP and Denny's are isolated, you know, they have a parking of their own. They are sort of the staple places that people know to go for after-hours or 24/7. To ramp it up for you guys and change that model, it'll take a long time. I mean, it'll take some time for people to know, oh yeah, the Village Pub is not open until 4, 4:00 AM. I, I kind of like, I, not kind of, I like the purity of businesses closed at 2:00 AM in downtown quarter, and that area is no longer available for public. I, I like that clarity, and that's where I stand.
Peter?
Well, the staff recommendation is that it would end at 2:00 AM.
The only thing we're looking at is whether or not this commission wants to do something different here.
Yeah, I understand. And the applicant said they'd be perfectly happy with, uh, the recommendation of staff, which is 2:00 AM.
I'm not inclined to vote for 4:00 AM. So if I can get a motion?
Motion to, um, approve the application. Motion to approve the application based on, with the, uh, comments and conditions stated by staff so eloquently.
And I second that.
Uh, this passes five to one. Welcome. And this comes back in six months for review? Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. We have one more item on our agenda, which is, uh, five, 5A, the general plan update. Mr. Director?
Madam Chair, we're going to be relatively quick on this item. There is a city council subcommittee meeting that starts at 5:30, and so we're trying to-
There is a city council subcommittee meeting that starts at 5:30 and so we're trying to finish our meeting prior to that time.
So, Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, just a few updates since we've given you an update previously on the general plan update process, just some things that we've been doing. We've created a website dedicated to this process, so it's psgeneralplan.com. So that is live and active and we encourage everyone for, who is seeking information on this process to go to that website and find out information relative to the general plan generally and updates for community events that we are having throughout this process. We've had a general plan steering, steering committee meeting, a community-wide workshop, and I'll just also update you on what's next. So as I said, this is the website, psgeneralplan.com, so this just is a glimpse of the first homepage that we've created. The steering committee met on January 27th and held their first meeting. At that meeting, the committee, we basically gave an introduction to what their roles are and what this process will be for the general plan update. We've discussed, we discussed their responsibilities as members of that committee and the overall kind of community participation process that we have planned for this project. We also asked for the committee's input on the community-wide survey that we have now opened up for community members to respond to as it relates to the visions, vision and priorities of the 2007 general plan. And we also established our next meeting, which will be March 23rd at the Wellwood Murray Library. So as I said, we had our first community-wide workshop, it was this past Monday, as all of you know. It was at the convention center, held 5:30 to 7:30. We had a presentation at 6 o'clock and that was recorded, so that is available on the website, psgeneralplan.com. We do, we did have interactive stations on each of the three elements that we are updating, the housing, the land use and the circulation. And we also had a station on the general plan vision and priorities where we had 10 laptops set up for people to complete the station or complete the survey. So this is just a photograph, kind of showing you what happened at the event. This is the presentation that we had at 6. This is the survey area where the laptops were located as well as the vision and priority station. Just some additional photos of that station. We had the circulation station where we had members of the public identify areas that could be improved for biking, walking and vehicular circulation throughout the city or they felt were working well. We had the land use station where we asked participants to give us feedback on what were community assets in their neighborhood or things that they would like to see in their respective neighborhoods. And then finally, the housing station, we had asked participants to give us what they felt were the most pressing housing issues in Palm Springs. So you see that by the dots that they placed on the map. In terms of the next steps in this process, we have, as I said, the community survey that we've posted on our website, that will close on March 6th at 5 p.m. So we are encouraging members of the public to participate in that survey. And then staff will be doing targeted outreach throughout the community and providing, you know, encouraging members of the public to participate in this process. And so staff is currently figuring out the locations and specifics, communities that we'll be targeting in the next couple of weeks. We'll have our next steering committee meeting on March 23rd and that will be at the Wellwood Murray Library downtown in their conference room. And then we plan to have a planning commission study session on the process that, on this process in April. So that's something, is something you'll look forward to in, in April. And then finally, we'll have our second community-wide workshop in May of this year. So that's going to be the spring workshop. And we have on our psgeneralplan website, kind of an overall timeline of, of this process and, as I said, ways to participate. So that really is the, the update that we wanted to provide to you today and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? I think most members of the commission were in attendance. The only comment I had is that Flynn and I discussed possibly inviting the AAC to attend our, our study session and members of the, and I think it would be good for us to have them involved in the dialogue. So if there's agreement on that? With that, there being, oh.
I, I do have one comment.
Yes.
Okay. So I think we all agree that we went through this evolution and development of understanding dispensary manufactured cultivation and due to the new ordinance, there probably won't be a, that many applications coming forward, probably, that, that's what I'm wondering. But if there are those projects in which infusion, you know, manufacturing type of project come in, have we been a little too excessive in the mechanical requirements? And should we be looking at that when it comes to food infused products? That's a commentary, because before it was like one solution fits all and now we have a much better understanding of what each of those type N and S, six and seven are doing. So that, that's a question that I wanted to ask. And then the second one is not specific to when the case come in, but if we can determine what ambience, ambient noise level is without a very specific project so that we don't look like we're focusing on a specific project to put that requirement in.
And I'd make a request as well. In the same lines, I'd like to know what is the current pipeline? Because I understand some have dropped out, some of the applicants. I'd like to know what we're going to be expecting to see at this point.
Okay, we can provide that for you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Please.
And I just wanted to add in there that this Saturday, we'll be having a parade for Black History Month in downtown Palm Springs at 10 a.m. So I hope you guys come out Saturday and enjoy festivities and, and have some good food and some celebration of Black History Month.
Are you going to have some infused cannabis candies?
Maybe.
I just wanted to second Maria's comments. I, I do think also on the sound issues, we've taken a number of actions and have began to develop a pattern in terms of what we've required. So if we can be reminded of that or we end up doing fairly similar things so that we're not, absent the city having these standards, if we're imposing them as the commission, we have something that looks like a standard so that, that it, it looks uniform and the city council can respond to that when they're looking at the new noise ordinance. Thank everybody for a short meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, just a reminder that our next meeting will be at 5:30 p.m.